Good.
Yeah, okay. Okay, good evening. Today is June 3rd, 2025. Welcome to the Town of Woodfin planning board of adjustment meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd also like to ask that everyone attending this meeting, please place your phones on silent so we do not disrupt disrupt this meeting. I'll now take role to certify the board quorum. Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Valentine.
Here.
Mr. Daroni.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Vehon.
Here.
Mr. Young.
Here.
Mr. Hayes, present, here. Okay. We have a, do we have an, has everybody had a chance to look at the agenda for on the board?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
That's approved. Has everybody had a chance to look at the May 6 minutes?
Yes.
Any questions?
No.
Concerns? Okay. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, um, we have a lot of people packed house. Appreciate that. We are going to go through this order. This order is the, uh, the agenda for tonight. We're going to start with the Altera, and then we have administrative reviews and legislative for, uh, Ricky, what's that one called?
Well, we have, uh, we have the one administrative review for the subdivision Riverside.
Okay.
And then we have the rezoning, the general rezoning at Ventana.
Okay.
And then the last thing's a text amendment.
Okay. So the Altera is going to be first.
Yeah, because that's all business.
So that's all this. So if anyone would like to step out, feel free to do that because it's going to, this may be a little while for the first one. So if you want to go, also for the public comment, uh, this is the time for public comment. We're going to hold the public comment for each individual item until that item is presented, and then you guys, I will pull, pull, uh, the audience up for that. Uh, is there anyone here that wants to speak not regarding something on the agenda? Okay. That being said, then, we will open the public up at the proper time. We're not going to cut you out. Uh, but I think it's better if we hear the project from the project people, the team, and then we'll allow you to come up because hopefully they will answer some of your questions or concerns. With that being said, uh, let's go on to the, uh, what was continued from May 6, 2025 is the request to conditionally resone 77.46 acres along Goodman Road and Altera Parkway from Mountain Village MV to an R21 to residential district, oh, and R21 to Mountain Village conditional zone MV dash CZ. The applicant is Dan Mason on behalf of the property owner Stars and Stripes 4E LLC and Altera Communities LLC. The property can be identified in Buncombe County tax maps by a whole bunch of pins that are listed up there if you want to see them. So Ricky, do you want to speak to, uh, update us on where we stand for any changes, additions?
Give me a second. It decided to pop that up there. So while I'm doing that, so what we were saying is that if you're here for the Ventana application, uh, if you're not wanting to sit here in the glaring sun for some reason, it may be a few minutes here. If you step out, we'll go out in the parking lot and look for you.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So you can step out. That way you don't feel squished in. We can come out and make an announcement. Because I don't want anybody that's here for that application to feel like they're constrained or can't breathe or too hot. I hate for everybody to stay here for 30, 45 minutes.
Ricky, I have just one statement. So in regards to the Altera project, so in regard to this matter, I would like to state for the record that I visited the proposed construction site on Saturday, May 24th, and met with Mayor McAllister on site. Two neighbors were also in attendance to show the actual location and boundaries of property. My attendance was strictly for information gathering on the site layout and neighboring street status. No personal opinions were stated at this meeting. So I just want to state that for the record. So there's no questions on that.
All right. Thank you bearing with me too on this computer catching up. Uh, so I won't, I'll just real quickly just kind of show because I think there might be some new faces tonight, just real quickly what we had on exhibits. Uh, so again, we said Exhibit A, the zoning map, the kind of grayish area in the center is the subject properties. It's several. Again, you have Runny Ridge, Audubon, Wind Whisper to the right, that light green, R21, MSDS to the south, the HI, the Charter Mountain subdivision that's kind of connecting to this at some point through a street and water connections is the green black stripe immediately to the left. And then we had heard something about another property, 17 acres immediately to the north, Litchfield. I think Capital owns that one. That was an easement question. That's that property immediately to the north. That's Mountain Village that has the word subject on top of it. So just to orient everybody really quickly, what we heard last time. Again, future land use map, we have residential one in this area, uh, which is also Charter Mountain, residential two, which is a little bit more rugged, steep to the east. And again, the aerial, this shows it a little bit easier. Uh, there's donut holes because the applicant doesn't own every parcel that was created from 2008 and nine when those plats were recorded. And so that's why you see some donut holes in this. As again, uh, so again, we have the light blue areas, the steep slope areas. And you remember, one of the main modifications was an offset where they kind of recombined some lots in the, uh, northern or left side of the frame and created a few additional lots, but they consolidated some lots. So I would say like the tail that's to the right, they kind of consolidated multiple lots to offset that grading allowance and impervious allowance. When you add and consider each lot individually of, you know, the size of lot or the point three, whatever's less, they've added that up and the offset would equal to those new drives based on the plan they submitted and provided to the board. Uh, then you have the main connecting road on this, uh, center right, the Altera Parkway connecting Wind Whisper back to the south or bottom of the frame, back to Goodman Road. And there's a climbing lane, sidewalk and street trees for the new construction in that area. And there's also sidewalks on the connector road, Energy Avenue that kind of goes to the left with a connection, like I mentioned, to Charter Mountain, that kind of round bulb. That's the Charter Mountain. There's a connection back to that development. As far as, um, just kind of back to this one here, just kind of emphasize everybody, uh, so the lots were plaid, like I said, 2009, there's been a couple turns through the hopper with this development, uh, like O8 pre-great recession, and then there was something that happened around four, 2014. In any case, all the lots that you see recorded are kind of like lots of record. They predate the application. And if you were to come in today and ask for a zoning permit for a house on existing lot, Maria and I would look at you and say, all right, do you have water service? Can you get potable water? And can you get a septic system or sewer? There's probably ways to get that in there. Or if the developer wanted to go ahead and connect those systems, that's all you kind of really need to do. There's paved roads. There, best I know, there's infrastructure kind of in place that's dry. And when I counted up the lots, I've counted it two or three times, I'm coming up with about 110 single family lots that were recorded, and there's approximately 114 townhome lots that are recorded. Again, he doesn't own or control all of them. It's about 20 single families that are not included and 21 townhomes that are not included. So those are still at play with different property owners. We heard a couple of them speak last month. So when you add that together, it's about 224 units lots that are floating out, lacking some sort of promised infrastructure from the initial development developer. So I kind of want to just kind of like, in a way, kind of focus this back in a, in some direction that the multifamily, those 225 units, that if we're talking about traffic tonight, keep in mind that the 224 more or less are baked in. So this is not really approving up or down 400 or zero. It's more like, is it 224? Is it the 440 some units that would come out of this? Additionally, I did check back of talk, I have spoken to some of the engineering team with Charter Mountain, kind of asking like, where's the sewer going? Where's that connecting? And it seems like everything is kind of running at that, I don't really have it, but yeah, oh, there we go. Kind of right down this area, the Charter Mountain sewer plans bring it down this corner. And the natural downhill is to bring sewer down this area. Obviously, we don't have sewer plans yet, but this approximate locations, the sewer would merge. And then speaking to that engineer, he was kind of telling me, he's like, yeah, sewer will flow gravity fed back toward MSD. So there's a line, gravity line in this area with MSD. So I was getting information sewer will flow. There's another project to extend this line. So there is some movement to do sewer. And also looking at the Charter Mountain, they're connecting water, uh, on Riverside Drive, an eight inch line, bringing that through their development. Remember that connector road, uh, bringing that eight inch line and stopping at the property line with like a fire hydrant. So there's a natural connection for the Altera project to pick that up and create that loop that's necessary for the city of Asheville supply back down in here. So we've talked about there's a line, they're kind of dry coming up through here. So that loop would be more or less, very roughly, I'm drawing here, in this direction to kind of look to get water from both directions. My understanding is the city kind of goes up Weaverville Road, Old Marshall to get to the prison and the county's training center. That's why there's water up in that area. And also follow back up with Kevin Tipton, the Fire Marshal for the county. Regardless of what gets approved by the board entitled, at the end of the day, they have to submit plans to the Buncombe County Permits and Inspections and the Fire Marshal Office demonstrating they have the domestic supply, they have the fire flows, and if there's any type of stair towers, regardless of the heights, they have to prove that. If they don't get those pressures right, and like I said, at the end of the day, if the loop were to be built and they still don't have the pressures, the county Fire Marshal will not issue that permit for construction of a building, three stories, four stories, five stories. So there's still going to be some life safety review that's outside of my expertise in any condition that's a commercial building project. So it'll be design professionals, um, involved with that if it moves to that stage. So so that you know that we've tried to dig a little bit further and ask those questions. He also said that obviously Woodfin Fire Department doesn't have a ladder truck, but there is one that they use from West Buncombe and Weaverville from time to time, was the information provided to me from Kevin. So if that kind of helps that, you know, West Buncombe has a couple of substations. I, again, I don't know which station that fire truck, ladder truck stationed at. They've got one, you know, right there at Gorman Bridge. They have the main one off of New Lester Highway. So there's a couple of stations. I don't know, Jerry, is there, I don't know if there's three substations or not. You might know, but I know there's at least two stations with West Buncombe.
Okay. So probably wouldn't be beneficial. All right. Uh, with that, uh, is there any questions with that information I just said? I'm trying not to redo the whole hearing that went on for two and a half hours. I'm trying to be, to mind everybody and y'all's, because I do. Yep, yep. It's both Asheville. Yes, their system. Yeah. Yeah. Because I had talked to Chad Pierce very early on, and he said Wind Whisper is where they kind of existing connected, but they want that loop for the pressures. And so with that connection to Charter, that'll put it all together. So I'll just kind of keep moving here. Again, you see the apartments in the center, that and the townhomes are not within the steep slope area. So the general grading limits of 70% apply in that area for Mountain Village. There's a condition to limit that to about 50% overall. And then here's that breakout. Now, again, I'll draw attention, the breakout in the top left, that's this developer's numbers. So there's a few other units that's not included, but we have the 225, you know, gold multifamily, and then the total single family 78, and then there's 91 townhomes, you know, the purple out parcel in the bottom below the multifamily, that's townhomes already. That's about 20 in that area. That's owned by somebody else. I'll keep moving here. Just let me know. I'm just trying not rehash it. I'm trying. So you all seen these view corridors that were, as you see in the top right, one and two, looking kind of from Audubon, um, looking kind of uphill to downhill, left, right to left. Again, this is kind of a little bit further south. And then the new one we received, this was kind of representing kind of higher up on the hill with the multifamilies, the bottom stacks here to kind of about, we talked about, you know, five stories, up to five stories, up 60 feet. So you can kind of see, this would be the multifamily down in here with potential single families on the hillside within Altera, and then the Audubon most likely represented in this area. So their view, how that drops down the hillside. I don't know if anybody else made it out there independently to look at the, the bowl. I kind of call it a bowl. It is kind of one big giant ridge that kind of circles back around in there. I mentioned that one modification about disturbance within the steep slope. Again, the light blue, the lots he's identified, and I will say kind of burgundy, purple, uh, are the ones that they would mark as open space to offset land disturbance when they make smaller lots. So this is the existing plat layout.
Ricky, in that, what they're including in that, that, we'll say the give back to offset a thing. Were they including the lots that are already sold that they don't own?
No, those lots are not, uh, included.
They should not be included in the.
No, they're not included. Yeah, yeah, they're not. They're not. That would be, these pink lots are the ones that are not part of the rezoning. So they're not, and you can kind of see that, again, they've marked open space, like a lot here, 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 and here's open space. And we also know there's some lots in this area that are, don't, just the natural flow, but these are going away. And then that's another two lots. Uh, we had a person here last month that owned these two, uh, as well. So they're not included in the rezoning. Yep. Yeah, I know there's a question.
The public is not open at this point.
Yep, yep. Okay, sorry. Yeah, I'll back up. So yeah, these would be the undeveloped parcels that they're kind of would mark as open space, kind of offset that steep slope credit. Yeah, just like, because they're limited on what they can do, and they're planned to grade an extra like two acres in the steep slope by marking these as open space, not to be disturbed. That area that they would have been allowed over here, the 2.32 that could have occurred, they're going to give that up and use it to put those little driveways in. So there's a net tenth of an acre less, and then still a little bit. Now we're talking about a few hundred square feet here, maybe a thousand or two square feet less. All right, I'll keep moving. I'm trying not to go too fast, um, but I don't, I, and then the public gets me asked a question for me to explain, but I'm trying to labor it. Um, just as the sidewalks, the modification, uh, we wanted to make it clear, but the, like I said, the lots are already plaid. So when you do a new major subdivision, you put sidewalks in Mountain Village or along the new roads. Uh, we're just kind of clearing it up because that was already plotted. Most of it's already been constructed in that single family area. And so this would just make it very straightforward. In the event I get hit by a runway elephant, then there's something in writing moving forward since projects had some trouble getting moving. But there is a sidewalk and bike lane along the main Altera Parkway running east to west. Again, we have old lighting ordinance. We said the street lights be LED. Almost everything from Duke is full cutoff. We'll try to make sure there's nothing with high color temperature that's too white. Uh, I think our big discussion point last time was, uh, the five story 60 foot height limit. Uh, one of those, I will say that you may have seen in the conditions, we did get a condition of 10% affordable housing offered on the multifamily side of the project. So if there's, it's up to 10%. So if there's 225 units, so you'd be expecting like 23 units of affordable housing. Obviously, if they only built 200, it would be 20 of the 200. The other, I think, I called it point, pain point was the five year vesting. Uh, I think the board felt more comfortable with three, so they did offer to come back down to three. So hopefully that'll. And then finally, I've kind of beat it to death about the allowance of disturbance, the offsets. I don't think that was a big discussion. All right. Sorry. I hope that was not too fast for everybody, but I don't want to drag it up. Yes. And I'll let y'all open for questions. I know Larry, you got one. Yes.
How would the 10% affordable housing be judged? What's, how's that based on what?
That would be 10, usually it's 80% or less of the area median income. So that's what we'll be using AMI of that. So, and again, it's complex that we talked about, and it's based on household size. So a, a single person household or an eight person household, they're going to have a different, the income be higher for the eight person household because it takes more money to live.
I'm assuming that would be like one, two, or three bedroom apartments?
Could possibly be. Yeah, it could be efficiencies. It could be a three bedroom.
Any other questions for Ricky? Thank you, Ricky.
I had one, uh, there, there's a, the last note that you had up there about the sidewalks versus walkways.
Yep.
Is some of it sidewalk and some walkway, or it's all trail?
I'll back it up real quick. Yeah. Just a point.
I wonder if there's, if there's places where it's appropriate to have it.
Yep. So these are all platted existing single family, and that's also existing road network that's built. They are providing the trails. That's kind of where I wanted to focus was the trails was the existing areas. So you saw in the trail connecting this area here, uh, a trail connecting back down to the cul-de-sac through the open space and back around the townhomes, and then another trail all the way parallel. It's hard to see, but there are, uh, sidewalks like running from this area all the way down this new street. It's graded, but there's no street down to this point, and then back down here. And then you have to zoom in close, but there's also another sidewalk through here. Jason's nodding to me. Yes, I've looked at this couple. So there's another sidewalk in this area.
So when, when I went up to look, there was a gate. Where's the gate located?
The gate is located, uh, right, right here from this area, and another gate's about right here. And there's a couple houses that are reconstructed.
Yep.
And then the other gate off Goodman, excuse me, is right here. And then this is a base with curb, and then that pavement stops about in this area, and this is all dirt in this area. So that's a missing link in there.
And Ricky, from where the green, white green goes to the, well, I believe that's the steep slope area.
Yeah.
Is there, are there sidewalks going to be installed to follow Altera Parkway all the way up?
I think it goes to about this approximate area. Uh, I, I don't know if it goes all the way to this point.
It doesn't go through the rest of the way?
No, it doesn't go all the way through.
Okay.
It does not. That was not, I did not see on the plan to go in all the way here. It will have a stripe, you know, again, shared the road bike facility. This would be the climbing lane in this area, the yellow dot. So the new road would get the climbing lane. There's a little bit of a climb, I think if anybody's out there, there's a little bit of a climb here. This is level for the mountains. It's level for the mountains, you know, uh, but this is definitely a steep climb here. Any other questions on that? And then I think, do you want the applicant come back up or?
We can have the applicant's team come up and we'll let them give us a little update, see if there's any changes from their end, please.
Dan, what do you mean to, is this a good one? Leave it on?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's all right.
And if you could, for the record, state your name and how you support the team, please.
Yeah, good, uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Dan Mason. I'm with.
Can you speak up a little bit?
My name is Dan Mason. I'm with St. Burke. Um, work on behalf of the applicant, um, the LLC to, on developing property. Um, tonight I have, uh, Colin Kinton here with McAdams, who is our transportation engineer, um, as well as in the back, I have Jason McGillan, that was, uh, with Site Design Studios, who's our landscape architecture and land planner group. Um, and so we're just back before you tonight, as you can see, kind of Ricky kind of touched on it, uh, that we have, uh, inserted some of the single family, um, some of the, the, uh, we've inserted some of the affordable housing. Sorry. Uh, we've inserted some of the affordable housing into the apartments. Um, we've come down on the five year ask and to the three year ask. Uh, we have, uh, and so we've kind of come back on those things. We've, we've, Ricky did a good job of speaking with the Fire Marshal, discussed, and I've discussed with our engineers how there will be a, an eight inch loop line that will run from the top up, uh, where the project begins along, up at the top right where the project begins, and then it'll run down through the south, all the way down through Goodman, um, which will afford what we need to, you know, when the time comes to do construction drawings for the apartments to, to make sure, to do the proper testing, to make sure we can build what, what we'd like to build. So, um, that's been discussed and, and kind of proven out. One of the other issues, uh, previously was, um, the Litchfield property, uh, that's kind of adjacent to us. There is actually an agreement that's already in place. It's entitled that we are to allow them an easement across our property. Uh, and we are still in talks with them. There's three locations we're looking at, um, to provide that with their planner and our planner. Uh, and we're happy to make that a condition tonight that we will have that location settled, um, coming back to prior to city council. Uh, so we're close on having that settled. And like I said, there's already agreement. So we, we're going to give them the easement. It's just a matter of the exact location, uh, where it would be.
Now, that agreement, I just have to ask, is strictly for access or does include water and sewer easements?
It's an access easement.
So you're not going to give them access to water and sewer?
We'll, yeah, we'll work that, we'll work that out. Some, somehow we'll give them access to some. They'll have to figure out a way to get to it. Yeah, but.
Well, I, I'm not.
Yeah.
Not knocking you.
Yeah.
But we don't see anything in writing tonight, and that's a concern because I don't want a landlocked piece of property that, okay, I'll give you a driveway, but you can't get water and sewer.
Well, there's two homes out there now without water and sewer. They built on septic and.
I understand that, but this is a bigger plot, and that's more than one. I'm just asking.
Yeah, but they're all, their entire project is in the steep slopes. So we don't expect that to be a very big project.
Okay, but you will grant them sewer and water and access?
They, if, we'll give them an easement across our property to get to it if they need to. Correct.
That's not really answering my question. I mean, it sounds like you have a problem with.
I'm not going to build a line to their property. I'll.
I'm not saying you're going to build it. I understand that.
But I'll give them an easement to, from our property to, to where they need to get it.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense? Is that one, is that clear?
A driveway access is one thing, but a easement to grant them access to the sewer line and water line.
Yeah.
I don't know where they're all located.
Yeah.
To where the roads go, the driveway's going to go, we'll call it. So I just want to make sure that they're not going to be an island.
Right.
And not have water and sewer.
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and so, yeah, that's, I mean, th- those are the main issues that, you know, obviously traffic is a big one. That's why we have, uh, Colin here to, to speak to any questions you guys have, um, regarding traffic, uh, or anything like that. So.
Of all the, the traffic analysis that was done, a lot is focused on I-26 that I have questions about Riverside Drive.
Can you please state your name and?
Sure.
Your credential?
Yep. Yeah. My name is Colin Kinton. I'm with the John R. McAdams Company, uh, and I'm a licensed engineer specializing in traffic engineering.
Yeah. And I just wondered what, um, what are the expectations for increased traffic flow out to Riverside Drive? Is there an equal? There's an entrance both ways. Like you can get out Goodman Road, right?
Correct, correct. So this access has, I mean, this development has two accesses, one to Goodman and then one with Altera Parkway. We've estimated that approximately ten percent of the traffic will come to and from Riverside on Goodman Road. And ninety percent will come down Altra and, you know, whether they get on I twenty-six or down to.
Please, please.
Merriman.
What up? So was it all based on that percentage? That was kind of my concern. As soon as I twenty-six is, you know, overloaded. Everyone dumps over on Riverside Drive today and it and it becomes a parking lot. So, you know, that's the extreme that we need to plan for. Is there, you know, as soon as there's it's worse over here, Google says it's red.
Right.
Everyone goes over there.
Yeah.
And and there's, you know, meanwhile, you've got people who are trying to ride bicycles. Down Riverside Drive with that kind of traffic. So that's that's my primary concern. This is going to be a pretty big increase in volume.
Right.
I don't know, you know, an answer to to mitigate that other than working with. Transportation on improving Riverside Drive.
Yeah, I mean, I think, you know, long term, looking at Riverside, apart from this community. You know, it's very popular with bikes and and shoulders are limited and and traffic. Has increased over the years between there and, you know, going up to the bridge to head over to Lester. So there's probably need in the future to to regrade the road and widen it with paved shoulders.
I guess the question that I would have, because I drove up, I couldn't get up Goodman today because there was a tractor trailer jackknifed across. But coming in the other way, it's clear that trucks are not allowed up in there. And looking at some of the corners, and I live in a development that's building currently and the trucks come in, tractor trailer trucks come in. Is there enough access from the other side? With all the corners to get construction vehicles in there? Or are you going to limit the size of construction vehicles that go into the development?
I haven't looked at it with regards to construction and constructability.
The way it is today, construction cannot come from the other end because there's a big no truck sign that says no trucks. So it's going to have to all come from Riverside Drive. I mean, you I read your report, so you really didn't do a. What I would call a traffic impact study. You just took the previous study and you just recalculated based upon their numbers.
We did the previous traffic impact study.
Okay.
So our our company McAdams used to be traffic planning and design and was acquired about six months ago. So it's one in the same.
But you and it's an independent study. It's not done through the DOT. Because the other project next door to you did do one that's done through the DOT, which has multiple. Problems and they have to make changes. And so if you take your projects and you take that project and you take the third project. So independently, they're not good to start with, but you combine them all. We put it puts it up over to daily trips twenty-five hundred. And I think thirty-five hundred. It's over seven, close to seven thousand vehicles a day just for these two projects alone.
And we've we've included both projects in our analysis in both both studies.
Where I these numbers are just shown for your project?
That is just the trip generation for this project. But in the prior twenty nineteen study, we included the Charter Mountain in the Altra project.
Excuse me.
And but and in going forward with this study, this was what you've seen is just the trip generation.
That's it. Yes, we have not seen a traffic study.
Exactly. So doing the updating the traffic study for the DOT. We would include and so we've gone through the scoping process with the DOT. And that, again, we would include, as we did with Charter Mountain, we would include Charter Mountain's. Background traffic in this study as well.
All right, that was not supplied to this board. Your previous traffic study all and I asked for a traffic study last month and all we received and it's just a trip study, not a traffic study. And coming from the twenty-six and I apologize, come up, we'll call Altara Boulevard. There's some, I'm going to call like a hookback turns with stop signs.
Hairpin turns, yes.
Yes. And what does your study say about that? I mean, if you're having seven thousand vehicles coming down to a stop sign or a hairpin turn, or you do actually think they're all going to stop and.
Well.
I I don't see how feasibility is going to work on that.
When when you're adding charter, you're assuming that all Charter Mountains traffic is coming down.
Looking at yours even. So we'll even take twenty-six hundred.
This is not going to be seven thousand.
No, this is going to be twenty-five hundred and twenty.
Correct.
I think it's low. If you take three hundred and eighty-four homes and you multiply it by two cars. And then you multiply that by an average of six trips a day per home, you're forty-six hundred.
That is not. Seem lower than what Ricky Ricky pulled numbers from last month from previous. Projects. Am I saying that correctly? The a previous, last month you had numbers which were much higher than what you're showing today. I was very surprised. It showed a lot lower.
I I haven't seen Ricky's numbers. I'm not sure where his.
We were just talking about like an example for one project, what would be?
How many trips per day?
Roughly on based on a unit.
Sixty.
And that's it. And it's different for single family versus townhome versus multifamily.
Correct.
Drops a lot.
Yeah, some multifamily generates about sixty percent that a single family would generate.
Well, according to last month, we said, single families did nine point four three per household per day. Townhomes did seven point two per day, per unit and six point seven four apartments. Now, are they the basic numbers you were using in your calculations? Because your your calculations seem lower than what we were expecting last month. And I'm not criticizing or doubting your numbers. I'm just saying they seem lower than what we were.
No, that's those are the numbers I I used. Yeah.
Okay. So again, how do you? Think this is going to affect going out toward twenty-six with? Just your project alone, twenty-five hundred more trips per day through those stop signs and.
So we we look at it from a peak hour standpoint. So we look at the AM peak hour and the PM peak hour. Because that's when you're going to see congestion. That's when you're going to see the highest levels of traffic. So looking at that, we, you know, we're looking at. Was it a hundred and ninety-two trips in the AM peak hour and two hundred and twenty-two trips in the PM peak hour? Of which ninety percent is likely to go down Altera Parkway and ten percent of that is likely to go down towards good down Goodman to Riverside. Then some of that is entering, some of it's exiting. So we distribute the traffic between entering and exiting. It comes down to, you know, if if you want to kind of boil it down, you're looking at about three cars per minute. Coming down Altera, which is about one every twenty seconds.
So I also don't, please, quiet, please. I I don't quite understand or don't quite agree because you say your peak and you're looking your PM and AM peaks. So it looks to be about four hundred and fifteen, we'll say. You have twenty-five hundred and twenty per day, but you're saying only four hundred are going to be.
No, I'm saying two hundred and twenty-two in the PM.
Right.
And a hundred and ninety-two in the AM.
So that's around four hundred and fifteen, two hundred and.
That's that's over a two hour period. A hundred and ninety-two in the AM peak hour. That's one hour.
Okay.
Two hundred and twenty-two in the PM peak hour. It's one hour.
But if I guess where I'm confused is if you're saying there's going to be a total of twenty-five hundred trips a day.
Right.
How how are you saying that during peak hours, there's only going to be a hundred and ninety-two?
Typically, only about ten percent of the traffic from a whole day occurs during that one peak hour.
Okay.
If you look at it over a like a twelve hour period, you're looking at about seventy-five percent of that traffic occurring. Over a twelve hour period, you know, you look at the late night hours, it's going to be very little traffic. So.
And then I don't think I still didn't get answers to how is that going to work around the? How did you call that? The sharp turns?
Hairpin turns?
Hairpin turns, yes. I mean, you think it's realistic? I mean, there's a stop sign and a hairpin turn?
In in the previous twenty nineteen study, we did make some recommendations about changing stop signs around.
Okay, I don't see that in this project. So in my. My concern is we keep referring to the previous project, but that's going to be null and void if this goes through. So I don't see any.
So the the previous study we did in twenty nineteen was based on four hundred and forty units.
Nineteen? Because I heard it was seventeen.
It was twenty nineteen.
Okay.
And it was for four hundred and forty units. And so that was submitted to DOT. It was submitted through and approved by DOT. We had recommendations in it and DOT had full responses to that. From that, we we had recommendations based on four and forty units to. Make some changes to stop signs coming down and also on the one of the off ramps on I twenty-six. What we've done now is update the trip generation. The trip generation now, because it's fewer units, now less than four hundred units. Is not as great as an impact, but we have not changed our recommendations from that twenty nineteen. The twenty nineteen recommendations are still valid.
Well, not as far as this application is as far as we're concerned, because I don't see any of that. I mean, that was not presented to us. Best of my knowledge, I have not seen it in our packet and no one's even spoke about it till you're saying it right now. So I'm just just clarifying that I think traffic is going to be a problem Riverside Drive especially. I mean, we got the wave going in right now. Please, please, please be quiet. We have the wave going in, the parks are being upgraded, the greenway is going in, blue way, whatever we want to call it all. Traffic is just going to explode and I live in Riverwalk, which comes out to Riverside Drive and I can barely get out of our our development. So I don't know how down that end, which is even worse. And there was the Riverside Drive was shut down last week. It was shut down this week. It is a very windy, dangerous road, not counting the bicycles who want to go two and three wide when the signs say, don't do that, but it is what it is. I have very big concerns about traffic and I drove the other way out the other day and drove it all around. I have a lot of concerns about. Your twenty-five hundred and then the other thirty-five hundred coming through. That's a lot. I mean, you're you're basing your answers. I understand why. It's your project. And I know you only speak to your project, but I have to look at from the town as a cumulative amount. So it's not just twenty-five hundred. It's close to six thousand trips per day, if not more than six thousand trip per day. So it's not just. You're saying one car every twenty seconds, you said?
Correct.
So then double that. So that's going to be. More than that because Alterra's.
Right, but. Charter Mountain is mainly that traffic is going down towards Riverside.
I don't agree with that. Somebody sees a shirt cut, wants to go to twenty-six Riverside Drive is going to be a mess. They're going to go over the hill and right down to twenty-six. Realistically, I mean, we all live here.
Correct, but realistically, there's going to be a balance between the two. Some of.
Please, please. Yes, I don't want to clear it. So just please keep it down for now. You will all get your chance to speak after they're all finished. I promise.
Some of Riverside, some of Riverside will go, I mean, some of Altera will go to Riverside, some of Charter Mountain will go to Altera Parkway.
How did you come up with the ninety-ten split? What's that based on?
Examining the traffic volumes, existing traffic volumes on Riverside and traffic volumes and the attractiveness of an interchange. The attractiveness of Merriman Avenue where the shopping is, you know, if you go to Riverside. It is kind of a circuitous way to get back over to Elk Mountain to get on interstate. You know, you're it's more of a scenic route. Coming down. To New Bridge to the interchange right there is a very more direct route.
Obviously, yes. So that's our point is everybody's going to go over the hill and go to the twenty-six that way. I mean, your traffic study that you're basing on your information was twenty nineteen, which is six years ago. Things have changed a lot in Woodfin in the last six years tremendously. Traffic has increased tremendously. After the hurricane, when there was problems with twenty-six and forty, you couldn't get into Asheville. We could not even get anywhere near Asheville because twenty-six was bogged down, Merriman's bogged down, Riverside Drive is bogged down. And if one of them gets.
And that's because forty was closed.
Yes, and if any of the any of the three routes in there gets messed up, the other two are a disaster.
Right.
So I think the board's concern is. I know your numbers may sound good, what you think on paper, but realistically, I'm assuming you don't live here, correct, in Woodfin?
I live on Lake Shore, right off Lake Shore.
Okay.
So I'm about a quarter mile from Woodfin.
But coming from this end of the.
I ride my bike on. You know, Riverside all the time.
My only road out of here pretty much is Elk Mountain Road. I mean, I can go down Riverside Drive and go around and around the ways, but the base way to get out of here is up Elk Mountain Road. This is going to. Triple the traffic, if not more than that. And it's a mess right now. The the intersection coming down, there's accidents at Elk Mountain Riverside Drive. There's accidents all over the place. I just, speaking for the board, I believe we have a concern with the traffic. I don't think it's going to be as pretty as everybody's trying to sell it, but. I'm not knocking you and I'm not knocking the thing. I'm just saying I don't believe it's going to be as simple as it sounds because you haven't gotten the wave completed yet. And then the parks completed yet and that's going to bring even more traffic down Riverside.
Yeah, I I'd be happy to include their traffic impact study in my analysis.
I have one question and I think, you know, it's. We'll we'll just leave it at that for traffic. I'm concerned about, you know. I twenty-six or well, future twenty-six as it goes through here and the expansion that that's going to see as. You know, DOT kind of builds out from, you know, the new overpass that's going to go over where Patton Bridge is. And then build back up through to the end of the state. Have you all factored in anything at all? Because, I mean, we're looking at an expansion of. Interstate as a whole and a larger sort of development footprint and, you know, individuals are already planning for that. And I'm wondering how you plan for that. Because this specifically, I mean, wasn't probably on the books, you know, back when I was in high school when this development plan was first started.
So, you know, we coordinate our traffic impact studies and we coordinate our scoping with North Carolina Department of Transportation. We look at the projects that they have on the horizon in the STIP. And and put it in our scope and say, here's here's what's included in the STIP.
So are you all like preparing to, I guess, make your plans kind of around that or? Is that not been factored in at all? That's just my my one question. I'm not trying to.
It is. It is factored in as far as projects that are funded and committed by the state of North Carolina.
Okay.
And so.
I mean, yeah, that's, I mean, you can only plan with what you have.
Correct.
Currently available. I was just curious if that had been, you know.
Yeah, and we and and we share model data.
Okay.
And in both, you know, model data with them, they share their model data to make sure that we're looking at a projection into the future. And taking into account any kind of work that they are doing and to make sure that it works together.
Okay. I've got one kind of overall question about that traffic impact in general. If you. Just as as an extreme example, what if what if the? The answer to your traffic study said, no, it's not feasible. There's too much traffic this would generate with the existing road infrastructure. We've got to wait until that changes, right? So if that was the case, I mean, it would be similar to, you know, you don't. You don't start building houses before you put the the water and sewer lines in and then you build the houses. Don't put the whole development in until you build the roads. But in that kind of case, the project should have to wait for the roads to be there, right? Is that what you typically see when?
Typically, so and when we do our traffic site, we're doing a projection out in this. For right now, we're looking at twenty thirty-one for this development. So we we build traffic out. You know, in our models to twenty thirty-one to see what kind of impacts that's going to be. Then we we run our analysis and we look at a level of service. And if we're seeing an existing acceptable level of service now and then a future level of service F. Then we have to look at, okay, what needs to be done? You know, do we need additional turn lane? Do we need a traffic signal? You know, what improvements need to be made to get that F back to something acceptable? And so there's different, you know, per DOT. And if it's impacting a DOT road, they're going to want that improvement as part of the development. So it it becomes part and parcel. Now, there's different ways to phase that. Based on the need and the funding, but, you know, that's part of the of the DOT traffic impact analysis process is to identify the improvements. And to ensure that those improvements are implemented.
I'm curious, you stated, you know, you you if something becomes like an F rating, you have to reevaluate to a better, higher standard. What typically is that standard? I'm not familiar with traffic engineering at all. So I guess for clarity of the board. In terms of that terminology, I want to understand what you're. So I guess for clarity of the board, in terms of that terminology, I'm, I want to understand what you're meaning by that.
So we, we assign a level of service at, at an intersection, whether it's an all-way stop or a two-way stop or a traffic signal. And we can assign, especially with traffic signals, we'll assign a level of service on every movement. So this left turn might be a 35 second delay and that's a level of service D. That through movement might be a 20 second delay. And so it's, it's all based on the, the stop delay that's modeled in there. And so you, just like your grades in, in high school, you, except we had E thrown in there. You get A through F. A through D is, is acceptable.
Okay, so D is acceptable.
Yeah, D for diploma, D's acceptable, E and F is, is not acceptable.
All right, that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Yep.
We can call the project back up again afterwards. Do we have any other questions for the project?
I've got a question.
Okay.
We've talked about the changes, you're, you're allowing the easement for the 17 acres. You're giving 10% for affordability. Is there any other changes other than that from the last month?
I think those were the three main ones you guys had asked for.
Oh, no, we had a bigger one. The height, the height restriction.
Yeah.
The 35 foot height restriction.
I haven't heard anything about the height.
We're still asking for the height restriction just simply because to make it a viable project, because it is a smaller apartment project. We need that 200 minimum to 225 units to make it viable for development. Once you start getting below that number of apartment units, it, it gets tough to, for apartment developers to make it. We're not, we're not the end developer. We'll partner with an apartment group. But most of the apartments you see in town and the new ones that are seen across the region here, those are typically, you know, 300 plus units. They're, they're, they're typically somewhere between.
Excuse me, one second.
Somewhere between, you know, 300 and 350 minimum units is what those, a standard apartment complex is. So, you know, to, to keep, to stay at that number of above 200 units, we need to keep the five story. And that's why we kind of talked to the fire marshal and, and, and made sure that that's something that he didn't see an issue with. But we are ask, still asking for that one variance.
Well, we've got, we've got five apartments here that's got trucks and their ladders will handle a height of 35 feet. Okay, if we want to go higher, let's say we've got a fire going at your apartment. And we reveal our Asheville, who has the 100 foot ladder, happens to be at one of their fires at that particular time. And they can't get here, then that building is going to burn down. Well, I can't, I can't sit here and agree to allowing 50 feet when the town of Woodfin can only handle a 35 foot height. I can't do that. So I'm asking, is there anything you can do to reduce it down to three stories? If you can't, I don't know what to do.
Well, I guess the issue is it just doesn't become a viable project for us if we go down, you know, below 200 units.
Can, can Asheville even get a hook and ladder in this development coming up from 26?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I, I know that basically the fire marshal would not let us, you know, he'll have say, once these plans start to come to life, he'll have say in whether, you know, what we can and can't do.
Yeah, but as a board, we have to look out for our residents and if a poor resident is stuck on floor five or on the roof during a fire. And if they stuck up there and we can't get a fire truck, our fire trucks arrive, we'll say within five minutes. And then if we determine that we need something that's bigger and they're not going to be here for another 10 or 15 minutes, it may be too late for these people. And, and, you know, residential, we don't want anybody dying in our town. I don't, the building burns down, the building burns down, but we don't want anybody dying. So that's the big concern on the height. You know, and last month someone said, oh, we're going to put sprinklers in and more elevators in and more stairwells. Well, that doesn't help the, if the fire's in the middle building, the guy up top is still stuck there. That's why I was very adamant last month about not having 60 foot height. And you kind of ignored that altogether is what I'm looking at right now. Cause you didn't even address it tonight, which I kind of expect you at least would have addressed it.
Well, I guess our, coming from our side, the issue is it just, I don't know that we'll find a partner to, to build the apartments if there's only, you know, 120 of them or 100, you know, if there's like a lower number.
Okay, I mean, we have a height restriction for a reason and, okay.
I can't.
I know, I know.
I'm not going to move forward.
Well, we'll debate over that. Let's walk everybody through. I just want to give everybody a chance to talk.
I mean, I would just say that if the fire marshal feels like that building's unsafe, he wouldn't allow us to build it afterwards. Right? Like I have plenty of developments we started where we didn't have an entry. And the fire marshal came in and said, you know what? You're putting an entry here because I need it for life and safety issues. So that, that happens all the time. The fire marshal's not going to allow something to be built that they don't think they can protect or they can service. He, and he might, I'm not saying that, you know, there's, there's a possibility the fire marshal says that you can't do this many stories, you know? But, um, right now it seems, and I thought Ricky talked, you know, Ricky had the conversation with him. It didn't seem like something that they had an issue with.
Maybe you should bring fire marshal here and speak with us.
Well, we're the board and we're not the fire marshal. But we have an ordinance in place, this is 35 foot height max. So we have that option to hold the 35 feet. And based upon what the board feels, it could possibly be a safety factor, which makes it even worse, not just an aesthetic factor. So it's not just that, so.
But that's, you know, that's what the fire marshal can tell us as well. I mean.
I would want to know whether or not Asheville can get a truck in there.
Well, what we heard tonight was not Asheville, it was Buncombe County and Weberville. But, but, but even still, I understand what you're saying because those are long trucks and usually have the wheel in the back and everything else. And how do you get around your hairpin turns? I don't know how they're ever going to get.
Well, there's, again, there's two homes out there now. So they can, they weren't worried about when those homes got built, they approved it, get to those homes.
They will follow the same restrictions. Yes.
No, that, I understand it's not a ladder truck, but, you know, we're not, we're not really changing the existing roadways a lot, you know? That's all I'm saying on that.
Well, that's kind of what our, our concern is. If you were going to upgrade stuff and make the, like, it was, you mentioned that Riverside Drive needs to be widened and it's a scenic route. Well, it was a scenic route. It's more of a mandatory route now. And realistically, there's a solid mountain wall. I don't see how they'd ever widen it. Riverside Drive is, I don't see it being widened personally without, you know, blasting out the whole hills. So what is being stated that, well, maybe they can do that in the future, I would not bank on that. So I have, we have to live what we have right now with the structure, the infrastructure that we have right now. And I believe the board's concern is the infrastructure with the roadway, number one, is not going to handle the traffic. And it will not be improved anytime in the near future and we have to live with it. So, and then the height restriction is the other concern. So we did address that and that was a big sticking point last month. And I was very surprised that you did not bring that up and kind of skirt the whole issue tonight about the height not changing. So, but that's fine. We, we're going to, we'll hear it all out. So we have any other questions for the board or for the applicant right now? We can bring them back up while the questions come back out. All right. So with that being said, then we're going to close this part of it and we're going to open it to the public and bring up the public.
Yeah, so I, I see you got a list up there. And I know several people might have signed up. You don't have to sign up to be here. If you don't want to speak, that's fine. Some people may have been confused and signed up, so just let the chair know if you don't want to speak. And of course, there might be people that were part of the Ventana application that may have signed up on one piece of paper. So we might just have to.
Yeah, I'm going to go through the complete list.
Yeah, go through the list, but I'm just saying. I think we could probably get somebody at the end. And I just want to address one thing. We don't have concurrency about roads and infrastructure in North Carolina. So I, I know there's something about building roads and there, and Florida used to have where like you could delay a project if there wasn't sufficient road capacity or school capacity. We don't have that in North Carolina. Some other states do. I don't know if that in Michigan or New York do, but we don't have that here. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that if the concern was like road capacity on Riverside Drive or road capacity on I-26, we, we couldn't use that capacity of operation of a E or F as a reason to deny the project related to the state road. So just want to put that out there. Now, I know there's been some concern about a fire truck turning radius or something. You know, a height, just for a height limit. But I just wanted to kind of clarify about the concurrency on road capacities on it.
Please bear with me on my pronunciation of the names. Number one, and I'm, I'm going to go by the list. I have three pages, so we're going to start at the top. Um, I'm going to ask for you to come up, state your name and address for the record. And, but first I want to ask if you're not here or not speaking for Alterra, we will still give you a chance to speak for the next project. So I don't want to waste your time. We only want to speak right now for the Alterra project at this point in the meeting. So Deborah Ginson Tanner?
Three minutes?
Three minutes, right?
Three minutes. I'll talk fast. I almost wanted to come up here and say, and, and Mr. Kennedy won't know what I'm talking about, but I wanted to just say, just say no. I mean, what we need for you all to do is not allow them to change the zoning to R-21. We, we have to accept and, and we're fine with that, that there's a master plan. It's been registered for years, so they can use Mills Place. So, um, and that we don't have any protection for the smaller lots because they're on the tax record. So the steep slope, I mean, they don't have to follow those. They get grandfathered in. There's nothing that can be done about that. So all the people that are here that have a lot of, they're your citizens, they have a lot of their money in their homes. We are all, and you are too, worried about the traffic. If you don't change the zoning, if you leave it at Mountain Village, then that's the only way we have to reduce the number of cars. Um, I think he was clear that with Mountain Village, we're going to have like 260-ish homes. Some townhomes, some homes and 19 that they can either do homes or townhomes or a 19 unit apartment. So they wouldn't have the height problem. If you let them do the R-21, then it's going to double. It really is. And the other thing is, can you make the, the road from Riverside up through the entrance? Make it a no pass through road. That way, because you're exactly right, anybody that's on Riverside, they're going to take a little ride up there. It's, it's, it's just what's going to happen. Um, and I know we can't probably stop it 100%, but if we make it a no through and you do all this stuff, we'll, we'll get their attention. There won't be as much traffic and I really think that'll make a big difference.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for your service. And I want to compliment Ricky because I bet you I sent him 50 emails and he answered every one of them. So I appreciate it.
We have Andrea James.
You can speak here.
We're trying not to clap tonight because it, it slows us down.
I'm sorry?
I said, please don't clap, it slows us down.
Wait, just, wait until the end. Wait until the end, then we can clap here, everybody.
Honestly, my little performance is going to be shortened because you took care of most of it.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, Andrea James. I have owned property, our home on Wind Whisper Drive for 17 years. Prior to that, we owned our home on Audubon Drive for 11 years. So I am very familiar with the Alterra development and with the outline of all the properties there and with the traffic, which I disagree with the engineer. The majority of traffic indeed may be in the AM and PM on 26 or on Merriman. But when you're coming down on 26, how many of us have run across a traffic accident? How many of us have seen 26 backed up, exit 23 backed all the way up with traffic going down Merriman Avenue? Whatever the traffic count was in 2019, here we are later with the apartments that are there at New Bridge. We also have Merriman Avenue, which is now changed to a two lane road. That is, that's impossible. There are times, a couple of weeks ago, I'm trying to go to a doctor's appointment at 10:00 AM in the morning and I can't get out because there's traffic as far as you can see, coming down the exit, trying to cut down Merriman. And I'm stuck. Access to our neighborhood, shortly after we moved in, we had a small fire on Wind Whisper Drive. My husband grilling, doesn't know what he's doing. We called the fire, we called the fire department. A gentleman shows up because of the slope of our driveway, the fire trucks cannot reach our house. They have to park on the bottom of the street and pull a hose up. They can't get to us and the fire was in the back. The turns that are there, the engineer needs to look at the access from Wind Whisper. You have on Wind Whisper, if you're leaving Alterra, you've got a stop sign on Stillview. You've got a stop sign on Firethorn. You have a stop sign for Town and Country Estates going to Audubon. There's a stop sign for Mills Place to Mills Road and then the stop sign for access to Merriman or to 26. So it's, I don't see how it's possible. So thank you for your time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Karen DeBetta? Could you please state your name?
Yes.
And where you live?
Karen DeBetta, 94 Running Ridge Road. And I have just gotten rid of my speech. It was all about balancing the public good with public harm. I think you've done an outstanding job of helping us to understand that you get it. And I just wanted to thank you all very much. I think we're in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you.
First name is Carol and from 403 Bain Bridge Road. It looks like Charlie or did I get it back or Charlie Carroll? Is it Carol Charlie?
Yeah, that's Charlie.
403.
403, anybody live at 403?
It must be outside. Yeah, it's different.
Baird Cove Road?
Baird Cove Road.
Okay.
Okay.
It's fine. Bruce Gilbert?
I did the same thing.
Okay. Mac?
Baumgarten.
Say it again.
Baumgarten.
Baumgarten? 105 Wild Cherry?
No speaking.
Okay. Judy Miller? And Roger Miller? Okay. Joseph Mandarino? Okay.
Yeah. And Sal is doing it.
Okay. That's okay. No, no, it's fine. This is going a lot faster. That's great. Jay Levine? Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, hi, my name is Jay Levine and I live at 13 Goodman Road. So one of the few folks up there through that area. The board has done an amazing job in answering many of the questions that I had previously to builders and developers. I will just add that living on the corner of that road, I hear the jake brakes and the screeching and the semi trucks that go a little bit off-road. There is no room for error. I've had a number of close calls, just making a left on a blind S-turn there. I believe the traffic studies that were done six or seven years ago can be thrown out the window. In addition to everything else, there is multiple large hauling trucks going back and forth from the dump, from hauling debris that are back in, in there, not from around here. So they don't, you know, necessarily know the roadways as well as some of us do. I'd like to just add that that is another serious concern for the next three to five years or whenever that ends up being a stoppage, which we all hope is sooner than later. But yeah, other than that, I think I just said, thank you for the board for understanding our, our, our concerns as residents and love it in the area. Thank you again.
Thank you. Scott O'Neil? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Scott O'Neil, 98 Running Ridge Road, relatively new resident. Very impressed with all your questions and how you guys have really answered a lot of questions. So super glad to be in this community and seeing you guys do what you're doing. I think the, the developers have overreached pretty significantly in terms of the amount of people that. If it was approved, if you do the R-21, that 300 would become around 1,000. That's a heck of a lot of density to just add in. Everyone's talked about the traffic. I second what they're saying. Mills Manufacturing, of course, is letting off at peak traffic hours. And if any, I know that all of you have been there, and they do a great job of being courteous. But to double that number just makes no sense. That's my two cents. Thanks for your service. I sure hope you do not allow this to go forward at this density. By the way, honestly, been a business a long time. The credibility of some of their answers raised far more questions to me than they answered from the development side. I would be very wary of moving forward without all of the answers. Thanks.
Thank you. And we have Olga O'Neil?
She just signed in.
Okay. House Begton, Begston?
Oh, no.
Okay, thank you. John Paget?
Nope, that's me.
Catherine Pollak?
You will not yet?
Could you please state your name and your address for the record?
I'm Catherine Pollak. I live at 64 Running Ridge Road. And I do want to say that I am really pleased to hear the questions you guys asked because you made my speech much shorter, so you can thank them for cutting back on my speech. I just want to say right now, even after they've cleaned up a lot of things after Helene, it's really difficult to come off the ridge to Mills Place and try to get onto 26. The entrance is too short, there's backups all the time, it's really difficult. And then I listened to these numbers, and we're talking about increasing the density. And I feel like it's like a box of chocolates. You can look at Altura as one chocolate, but when you put all these groups together, the Litchfield, the Charter, we're talking about eating too many chocolates. And I really don't want us to do that. I moved to Woodfin because it's a lovely community, it's got open space, I don't want to spend my life in traffic. I could live in Asheville if I wanted to do that, and I don't. So I thank you for your questions, for protecting us for 35 feet, and you cut my speech short, but thank you.
Thank you. Eleanor Floyd?
No questions.
Okay, got it right, I guess. Miriam Gil? Geb? Geb?
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Miriam Geb, 39 Audubon, but I own a lot across the street where they're wanting to put housing. And before, it was always a green space, and that concerns me greatly. I don't know, can you show C, exhibit C, please? Okay, what are these things here?
Those are existing single-family lots.
Those are existing lots?
Yeah.
And my lot borders backs up on that, and that's a very steep area there. And I just had my lot, three weeks ago, not knowing about this meeting, had a surveyor come. And I am very concerned about houses being put along in this area here. That was always before a green space where people could walk. And if you're going to put another road parallel to the Altura, I see that as an extreme difficult situation, as far as sewer, as far as water, in many different situations. And back in the days of J.B. Corbin, I don't know if you all know him, he was a real estate person who developed Audubon along with my dad, L.G. Gebb. And I'm just really concerned because that was supposed to be a place where there could be peace, there could be family get-togethers. We used to have Fourth of July in the cul-de-sac and all of those kind of things. And I just see all of that disappearing. And thank you all for your good questions. And I am, it's terrible, terrible traffic now, getting out of Mills Place, turning left or turning right, depending on which way you go. It's impossible now, and if more houses are added, it's going to be extremely difficult. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I apologize. I'm going to ask, who lives at 40 Audubon? There's a sign up and I cannot...
That's email.
Okay, thank you. Frank Ekman, Ekman?
He's from Better than Southern Tana.
Okay, so he may still... Glenda, over by... I can pronounce that one.
Well, I also...
It's on the boards.
I also want to thank you for the scrutiny that you are putting on this project. Guys, you make me very proud that I was once a member of your esteemed group. But the only thing that the proposal presented tonight that I thought was true was that 90% of the traffic is going to go through Wind Whisper and Mills Place. And so if you find yourself having to legally approve some things, which is always a possibility, just please select the option that puts the fewest units in this development. So thank you, guys.
Thank you. We have two, Michael and Hannah Matthews?
Are you for Altura?
You want to speak about Altura?
Yes, for sure.
Okay. Oh, okay, that's fine. You just speak, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hold my notes back up here. Pardon me. My name is Michael Matthews. I live at 32 Mills Place. I spoke last time as well. I'll reiterate a couple of those and maybe a few others. The gentleman that said that being in business for a while, the presentation from the developers raises as many questions or more than it answered, I second that, for what that's worth. I don't really trust a lot of what happened there. Point that I made last time, did anybody uncover whether or not this original plan was a gated community? I brought this up, that there were two slivers on either side of Firethorn. One was given to me, one was given to New Bridge Apartments. Those were retained by the Altura development and was only given up in bankruptcy because they didn't see a need for it any longer. And the purpose of those plats was for signage and gate specifically on the plat. I've seen it, I just can't find it, unfortunately. So I think it would be worthwhile to look back and clarify that if the original development was supposed to be gated. That is an important, important point. Another point I brought up last week that has not been talked about today is what is a neighborhood exactly? The town of Woodfin has made some decisions in the past to try to preserve what a neighborhood is and what a neighborhood feels like. And putting 7,000 cars a day, one car every 20 seconds through a neighborhood does not feel very neighborhood to me. The same logic was used to ban vacation rentals in our neighborhood, I might add, from the traffic that two or three houses brought, yet alone 300 multifamily and single-family properties. I've seen Mills Place grow to a point that the traffic is concerning for what is a neighborhood. Now granted, I see the worst of it. I am the very first house, I see every single car that comes in and out, I see the apartments, I see the Firethorn, I see everything. But Mills Place specifically is 20 miles an hour. And I guarantee you, 60 miles an hour is the norm accelerating out of that stop sign. On top of that, it is a downhill grade to the stop sign, and 20 miles an hour, it is not. I have four young children, we encourage them to play outside, and this is concerning to me. That is not what a neighborhood is supposed to be. There needs to be a traffic study presented. It is very hard to move forward in any regards or for us as residents to have any source of sense of peace, for you as planners to know what is actually going to be done if there's no data to back it up, if there's no plan presented for you to make decisions on. There needs to be a study in hand. The study also needs to account for the people who actually live there now. No one has talked about, again, the traffic of the current residents and how that impacts things. Another thing, what will the greater Asheville area locals do? I brought this up last week. How nice it would be to have a cut-through from I-house over the mountain straight to Riverside to avoid all the rigmaroo of the interstate. I am not the only person in Asheville that knows about this and wishes that was there. That being said, I am so glad it is not there for the reasons previously stated. This is not a neighborhood if it's a cut-through and a road.
Mr. Matthews, I'm going to give you about 10 seconds. Wrap it up, please.
All right. If that is all I have, I would like for the developer to go on the record and say that they do not believe that the traffic is an issue, that they can repeat the following and say that the roads will support these cars safely, that the straight shot over the ridge into Wind Whisper will be done at the speed limit, and the downhill after it will be done same, that the six turns, hairpin turns, four stop signs over a couple thousand feet is also safe. And let's not forget the traffic within their own development. That is a very steep grade from the top of Wind Whisper down Altura Parkway to Goodman. Is that going to be safe and is that going to be adhered to? It just seems unlikely to me from what I've seen. Thank you for your time and thank you for your diligence.
All right, thank you. Speaker TV, is that the next one or is this one? Well, I'll read the names anyway, just to be sure. Kathleen Johnson, you for the next one? Says V2B. So not a speaking. John Johnston?
Just Ted.
Can you please come up to the mic? And you're speaking about this project?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is John Johnston. I live at 44 Audubon, excuse me, 44 Audubon. Are there criteria for the applicants in terms of what they present? We've raised questions, for example, about what is the fire safety, questions that were raised and things. Are there, are there things they're supposed to bring forward? It seems like you're in a bad position to try and make decisions about things without adequate information. Do you all, do they, do you tell them?
We don't typically respond to your comments.
Okay, all right.
Don't take it personal?
No, no, that's fine. It just amazes me that they're, that they're, that they came without the information that was being helpful to you.
We respond with a decision.
Yes.
And thank you very much. It'd be great questions, you guys are good gentlemen.
Thank you. I'm sorry, no disrespect in that. Josh Tagger?
Tagger.
Tagger?
That's not a speaker, that's just a sign.
Okay. Oh, well, this could be why I'm getting these answers. We'll still go through, just to make sure there's no mistakes. Taylor Osborne? Do you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Taylor Osborne. I'm with the Van Winkle Law Firm, an attorney there. We represent Litchfield. I'd spoken last time, and we've talked briefly today about the easement that they, that Litchfield has across the property that's being developed. So I just wanted to provide some updates to you all and clarify that the easement is 60 feet in width, and that's for ingress, egress, regress, and the installation and maintenance of utilities. The exact location of the right-of-way is subject to the approval of Stars and Stripes, which approval cannot be unreasonably withheld. So Litchfield gets to select the location subject to the approval of Stars and Stripes. And since the last meeting, we've hired Chris Day with Civil Design Concepts. We've put together a couple of different options, we've shared those with Jason. And so we're trying to work that out, but just with the quick turnaround, haven't been able to actually establish that location. So our request would be for you all to continue this until the next meeting, give us time to actually set that location and settle that matter. But if the board must move forward today, we ask that if approval is granted, that it be subject to our easement and its location as a condition that must be fulfilled.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Beth Hollander?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Elizabeth Freyberg? Freyberg?
I was saying the wrong part.
Patty Miller?
No.
You actually signed the right list. I'm just going through them all of them just to make sure, because we have them a little mixed match. So we have Jerry and Maxine Rogers? Okay. I think we had this one. Ruth Gee?
I spoke last term, so now...
Okay. And I just have an Andrew. Okay.
I didn't sign up to speak, but I want you.
Okay. About this project?
Is it my turn now?
About this project?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Could you please state your name and address?
My name is Susan Andrew, and I live on Wind Whisper. And my first question, and you just kind of said like you couldn't respond, but at the last meeting, none of you had driven up Wind Whisper in that area. I mean, I think all of you agreed, none of you had driven there. So I know you said earlier you have, but have the rest of you driven up there?
I have.
Okay, so you've seen, because when the gentleman was up here from the Highway Department or whatever, talking about extending the stop signs, or I'm trying to visualize in my mind how you extend a stop sign, like ours turns like this, and you, what do you, you bring it closer or further away, and the roads are narrow anyhow. And so if they don't stop here, or even if they stop, the traffic's going to back up. And we already know, like Andrea said, last week, we had a day, I had a doctor's appointment also, and we couldn't get, could not get out for several hours because there was a traffic accident going into Asheville. Everybody comes off of our exit, and I don't, I don't even understand that they aren't thinking about the 500 apartments. They're not bringing that into the amount of traffic that's going out, the same way we all get out. And we don't have a little secret road. If you even get out to Merriman Avenue, you can't go up through the neighborhood across the street. It's hard to find a place that you can cut through. And everybody that is going to have an opportunity to come down our road from that development is going to come down our road because they want to get on the interstate. It's not going to do them any good to get down on Goodman or whatever. The other thing, back to the gate, is I'm questioning, and maybe you can respond to this, but I've talked to, I've tried to find out, the person that sold our property originally to Tommy Coleman lives in our neighborhood, but it was her father, so she doesn't remember any of the information about it. I just know her first name is Johnny, but she doesn't talk to anyone. But if our road is what you're calling a Woodfin Road or Town Road or whatever, it's not a City of Asheville road. So does Woodfin have an objection? Because we've always been told that we couldn't have a gate on our road to stop, stop at our road and go down to Altura. We've been told we couldn't have a gate. But if it's a Woodfin Road, does Woodfin have rules against having a gate? Because maybe we still can have a gate. That's all. I don't know how we find that out, but think about it, maybe somebody can respond to that.
I would suggest speak to Ricky.
Okay. come down our road because they want to get on the interstate. It's not going to do them any good to get down on Goodman or whatever. The other thing back to the gate is I'm questioning, and maybe you can respond to this, but I've talked to I tried to find out the person that sold our property originally to Tommy Coleman lives in our neighborhood, but it was her father. So she doesn't remember any of the information about it. I just know her first name is Johnny, but she doesn't talk to anyone. But if our road is what you're calling a Woodfin Road or Town Road or whatever, it's not a City of Asheville Road. So does Woodfin have an objection? Because we've always been told that we couldn't have a gate on our road to stop stop at our road and go down to Altura. We've been told we couldn't have a gate. But if it's a Woodfin Road, does Woodfin have rules against having a gate? Because maybe we still can have a gate. That's all. I don't know how we find that out. But think about it, maybe somebody can respond to that.
I would suggest speak to Ricky.
Okay, Ricky. Can I ask you? Do you know what the ruling is?
I'll answer.
Okay. We'll get back with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Andrea James?
She's ours.
Oh, okay. We're on two. Okay.
There were two pages there.
You just signed everything.
Karen DeBetta?
She's on.
Oh, we're on. Okay. Jay Levine?
Sorry, I apologize. I'm just going through the list. Scott O'Neil?
All right.
Let's go quicker. Catherine Pollack?
I was going to.
Gary Lind or Barbara Lind?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Now we're almost done. Stephen Laurie?
He's here for a good time.
Okay. Miriam Geb?
Spoke.
And Glenda, Michael Matthews spoke, and Jim Ott. Last one on the list. If you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
You need to move forward like that.
Okay. And this is just just to share it back.
Okay.
That's the easiest thing to do.
Yeah.
If you want to have that.
Yeah, there we go. Thanks. My name's Jim Ott, and I represent the 43 lot owners who already had this thing approved back in 2008. And one of the issues I've got is why I'll use this cursor. All of these lots here and here, and then this little piece right here are owned, this the ones in here owned by individual people, but they all are platted, recorded, and they all have water and sewer hookups to them already. This piece right here also has sewer underground and hookups for this parcel here. Why the frustration we have is that any kind of changing this, which is proposed, and I don't I think this is just for aesthetics. I'm not sure why they're changing this and putting splitting these lots that already have already platted and already have sewer and water to them. Why they're doing that? Because it's only going to delay further the utilities connections that we need to sewer and to the lower part of that sewer line to get these guys to be able to build homes on the lots they bought. So I think this thing comes down to it's more about the apartment thing than it is anything else, because the rest of these things already have sewer and water connections to them, and they've been platted. So any further delays, I'm not going to be supportive of for the people that already bought these things and been sitting there with them since 2008. Okay?
All right.
That's all. Yep.
Can I have one more? I didn't.
Okay, Ricky, that's assuming it's all okay.
You still have it open. If she didn't sign up, I'd say that you could let somebody sign up. But if somebody's already spoken, then no.
Just a show of hands, how many people did not sign up that wants to speak for Altura? Just two?
I signed up.
I want to speak.
So you signed up?
I was a little late.
It's like, yeah, there might be.
I have to back at her.
Okay. If you want to come up, please, and state your name and address for the record. Marie, do I have to write this down? Or it's okay on the recording?
I'll get it.
Okay.
My name is Ashley Grant. I'm at 96 Running Ridge Road. First off, thank you all for your service. I really appreciate it. I am born and raised in Woodfin. I am one of the houses that's going to have the cars every 20 seconds right behind my home. I'm not against progress. Like, I know that's where we're moving. But I do encourage you to really look at keeping it the way that was initially plotted to be. Not only are we looking at the increased traffic, but if y'all have ever been on Altura, I had to walk it. When the hurricane came down, we got stuck on our road. It's not a wide road. So not only thinking about construction, come up Running Ridge Road. It's about the same width. Think about the construction trucks on those. Like, you'll fall off the mountain. It's very similar in Altura. So I worry about that. I love Woodfin, and I also worry about the wildlife. We have bears. We have turkey. We have deer. Like, that is why people come to Woodfin. And so I'm not saying don't have progress, but let's maintain what we love about Woodfin and just make sure it is done in a responsible way.
Thank you.
Then should be last but not least, Mark Logan. Did I get it?
Thank you.
You could state your name and address for the record.
Mark Logan, 243 Wind Whisper Drive. And the cursor, I live right there, right at the beginning of all this. And I want to, well, others. I don't know if I get back to that one.
Ricky.
Anyway, the traffic, I echo what this lady said, and I appreciate what you that you what you're considering, that the traffic is going to be a nightmare. That in order to move forward, and I don't I understand the man wants to move forward. I understand that. But in order to move forward, you can't have every 20 seconds cars zooming by. And I'd like that map. I'd like to show you. You know, we need another exit anyway to 26 for all the reasons everybody else has said. So let me show you where I think we need another exit. Right there. Why not? And we're going to put hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of families and cars here, and they're all going to rush through this little tiny labyrinth here. Why not put up here Bear Woods right here? What an exit to 26. Everybody here is going to want to get on 26 as fast as they can. And.
Did you point with the arrow on that? So.
Yeah.
It's great.
Well, you can see your side. Okay. Right. There needs to be an exit right there on 26.
I don't see that house.
I don't see her. Okay, over here. Anyway.
That's a dolly right behind.
Okay. Well, you're not going to be able to get all these people out to 26 as fast as they want to get there without accidents and problems galore. So that's all I can say. We need another exit. I don't care. I'm just showing you some bare space up there with I didn't see any houses there. But there needs to be another exit for such obvious reasons, you know, so that we don't have everybody going down Riverside Drive. So we need another exit because not only do they want to get on 26, they want to get on Merriman Avenue, because that's where the shops are. They don't care about pulling way down the other way. I guarantee you, that's where the traffic's going to go. And I appreciate you driving that. Because when you did, you saw the dilemma. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Now, yeah, now we can clap.
Okay. So now we're going to close.
Well, I was gonna say, before you close, do you have any other questions of staff?
Okay.
Or the applicant? I will just say that I, you know, staff doesn't take a position. We do recommend approval. I'll say we recommend approval. While that was historically based on the fact that was been a couple turns through the hopper with a plan. The other thing, too, is that everybody pretty much will wind up driving through somebody's neighborhood to get to their house. So if you take Mills Place, I'm not saying, but example Mills Place, we have a neighborhood built that was added on to the end of Mills Place. Bear Bridge Hills was another development that was added on. And you have Autobahn that's come off. So incrementally over time, I'll point out, the obvious is that neighborhoods get extended. And I ain't saying what I can't do a value judgment, but this connection is helpful long term for police fire resiliency to get through. So we would want to see a public road through here as opposed to a private gated road, because it is helpful to have public infrastructure and having a public sidewalk with a public bike way to create some loops with Elk Mountain Road, hopefully getting an uphill climbing lane. People will be able to circulate as well as we can get a greenway further south down Beaver Dam Creek. So there are some long term things to look at. Now, I know there's a lot of concerns about traffic, and y'all have heard from that. And there's some other concerns since I was board. But I'm will stop there. I'm not going to advocate hard sell this project. But I just don't want everybody to forget that all of us homes at some point, I drive through a residential neighborhood to get to my house. So with that, I will stop saying anything else.
Does the board have any questions for Ricky or for the project team?
Yep.
Other questions?
So when you talked to the fire marshal, did you talk about fire trucks coming in that curvy road?
Well, we haven't had a template laid out. So honestly, you'd have to have somebody with a fire truck template. There's various templates that a traffic engineer can use that can model the curves and the button hook that might be based on that truck, if it's a semi truck, a straight truck, or like a fire truck.
It was tight for my tire.
Yeah. I mean, I'm sure the drivers can get in there, but, you know, we haven't had them in there. I will.
I'll just ask a question, too. The no truck sign.
Yep.
What does that? Is there a weight limit? Is that how that is driven? Or is it CDL-driven truck? How's that?
I think we'd have to dig into the the local ordinance town. A town can restrict the size of a truck. I would say more than likely that's clearly it's not a semi truck. It's probably some we'd have to check, see if it's got a gross vehicle weight. Sometimes you'll say trucks not over three axles.
Okay. Yeah, it's a picture of a box truck.
Yeah.
There's no.
Yeah, I would say it's pretty clear. We'd have to look and see what the resolution was.
Okay.
But a town can restrict a certain weight limit. When we get to state roads, most time you can't start restricting that unless there's like a low clearance, like a railroad bridge, or there's a weight limit on this bridge for structural deficiencies. But yeah, the town could restrict that, and we could kind of emphasize that whether it be no more than three axles or not over a gross vehicle weight of 30,000 pounds. Because, you know, you're going to get UPS truck, you're going to get a box truck with Lowe's bringing you a washer and dryer, or you'll get a furniture delivery. I would say those are maybe reasonable to come through there. But I understand the concern about a semi or something that's 42, 48 feet long.
And that that would be my concern, bringing in building supplies.
Yeah.
Because if you order something from Lowe's, they're going to bring a full truckload.
Yeah. Yeah. And sometimes, yeah, I've ordered some stuff recently, and it was all a small straight truck. So it just depends. But we could try to I could talk to police about that.
Okay.
That'd be helpful.
So other questions?
Any questions?
Do y'all have any other questions for the applicant or the team?
Here's that we are done asking questions.
Okay, I don't know. Do you do they have anything to add or respond to?
Does the applicant want to?
Do you have anything to say, Dan, or respond? I don't want to cut you off too quick. Or is Jason before design?
You're gonna have to come up to the microphone to the.
I just don't I just I know there's a lot of statements and questions. I don't want to let him not have a chance to either answer something or respond to.
Fair enough.
Sure.
Yeah.
Look, I can see there's still a lot of angst over the apartment and the apartment heights. And, you know, so I would be willing to, if we could, we could table that portion of the master plan potentially, and just move forward with the revision of the lots, the single-family lots and the townhomes, which is a reduction in the amount of units that are actually on the property today that we own.
Can you say that again? So you're saying split the this into separate?
Projects.
Projects?
Well, we would just look at a redesign potentially of the apartment pod. I would, you know, talk to potential more apartment developers to see if the 35 height is something we can agree to. I don't want to agree to the 35 height now, and then it not be something viable.
So I would say that we're probably going to have to vote on the current application. And if you want to modify the application, you have to come back in and reapply, Ricky. Is that how that works?
No, not necessarily. Sorry. So you have a proposal for you for, you know, let's just back up for.
We're voting what we have in front of us tonight.
Well, you have an application in front of you. So you have the 225 multifamily and the 91 townhomes and the 78 single family. We could, as part of the modifications or this application request, what we've advertised, it can be reduced. So we're not making the project area bigger or increasing the number of units or increasing the intensity. So if he wanted to back out the multifamily in part or whole, or if he wanted to say, I want to go to 200 multifamily, that's permissible in this hearing setting.
But he's not willing to agree to that tonight.
Well, I'm just saying, that's what I'm gonna say. But if he, I'll say, Dan, are you saying that you're willing to remove the 225 from consideration tonight and move forward with the rest of the project proposal? Is that what I heard? I want to make sure I'm saying that right.
Yes, if we can come back with another plan.
Yeah, some other point.
Potentially.
Yeah.
Whether what that plan is, I don't know yet. But yeah.
Yeah, but I don't think we should be voting on something that's not vulnerable. I mean, I think we should vote on what we have. Either we withdraw it and some resubmit it with a new application. I'm not gonna I don't feel comfortable with the board voting on saying, pull this out for now, but we might come back again. I don't want to do that.
Well, I mean, if he pulls it out, then he would have to start if it went forward to town council as approval of the 78 single family and the 91 townhome units, with all those other conditions that are applicable, the 225 is backed out moving forward. If he wanted to come back to add that in, it would have to come back as another CZ application with another public hearing. We would notice everybody again, and we'd start the process. So it would be a new application moving forward for that gold area. So that's why he's saying is just he's going to remove that. And then our net density of the 447 units we've heard about tonight would drop somewhere down to like what's really honestly, we're back to closer to that 224. What's baked in, it'd actually be less because he's combining about.
169.
Yeah. Yeah. So he's backing down.
So would that area in the gold still be included in the rezone?
No, it would be backed out completely, remain the mountain village that it's already is. He would just back that out completely.
Well, we also heard from the young lady that she would like another month to finalize the easement.
Yeah, but I.
Or condition.
Yeah.
Or condition.
That a condition.
Okay, okay. I know that they're working with.
I don't want to keep bringing everybody out every month.
Yeah, yeah. So I mean, so, yeah, so we can he could offer to remove a portion of that at any point. As long as we're reducing the intensity and the acreage, we're moving down. We can't we can't move up. We can't do a bait switch or advertise for 295 and throw in 300 at the last minute or 305.
Well, even before I poll the board right now, are you willing to do that? Because if you stated you didn't want to do that, you would take it back and think about it. So that's two different stories. Well, you need to take a break to talk.
Yeah, if there's.
Do you need a recess for five minutes to talk?
Can we have that?
It wasn't viable an hour ago. Why isn't it viable now?
You know what?
Well, I'm not.
We need to have some ground.
Yes, please.
And let's just try to be polite.
I'm not saying I'm not doing the apartments, but I'm saying just pull that section of the plan for now. That's what that's what I was asking. If that's not viable, then if that's not something we can do tonight.
You can reduce. He can.
Yeah, but I think you're talking apples. He's talking oranges, is what I'm hearing. Because you're saying he can do that, but he's saying he just wants to temporarily remove it and not.
If it gets removed tonight.
It's gone.
It's out of this request moving forward. We'll have I mean, we'll advertise like we've been advertising, but we'll it's offered to be removed. And if he comes back, whether that be if this gets approved by town council in the next couple of months, the new application, you have to start over again to add the 225 back.
So it'll be completely independent application, not tied to this. That's not what I'm hearing. So that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, it would be we would come back again.
But you understand, you would have to come back.
Right. I understand. Understand it. Right?
Yeah, you just can't modify it and say we're going to continue. That's going to be a completely new application. I just want to make sure it's clear because I don't think you seem like you understand that's what we're talking about.
But for the multifamily section.
Yeah, you're just withdrawing the multi. All right. So let me ask the board, do we want to even entertain this? Or we just want to take a vote on what we have in force tonight? What I'll ask Chris.
I thought that that accomplished a lot of my concerns.
By removing it.
By removing it. Right.
Okay.
That's high restriction. That's.
So you guys being willing to vote on this, if that was completely removed from this project.
I've got some comments I want to make that may add to.
Go ahead.
Nothing else. In listening to all of the comments tonight, a couple of sections struck me as being serious enough to talk about. One of them, I was a fire marshal in Buckham County for a number of years before I retired. I'm familiar with fire trouble. What's going to happen if you get up here and you've got a street that's too narrow to get a firetruck on? Or that street happens to be a dead end, then you get down there and you have to the first truck gets in there to your home. Your home's on fire. Something has happened to the water supply. And they've got to get that truck out there. Do they have room to turn it around? That's something Buckham County now requires for dead end street. You've got to be able to turn that firetruck around. You're not going to be able to get a 100-foot ladder truck in most of these places, but that's neither here nor there because they have other ways that they can. in most of these places, but that's neither here nor there because they have other ways that they can fight a fire. But anyway, if they're involved in any kind of a walk, what we refer to in the fire service as a water hall, you've got to have room to turn those trucks around so you can shuttle water in and out when the late trucks arrive on the scene. And it's just something to think about. And also on Goodman Road, are you planning to change the entrance to Goodman Road?
At Riverside?
Get it out of that curve that it's in?
Talking about the connection to Riverside?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, no, we would not move that, we would not move Riverside.
You're not gonna do that. You've got a dangerous situation there with all the traffic that.
Yeah.
It's gonna be coming down Goodman Road, which right now, some people are going to come across.
The previous.
There to get to.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's another area that could be a real bottleneck.
Yeah, the previous TIA and, and NC DOT commented about, they wanted flashers at that intersection to help slow traffic.
I can, I can recall back when I was in high school and that was several years. Anyway, those school buses and the Goodman Road, the termination of that bus route. And we had to put a flight person on Riverside Drive before you got into that curve just to keep somebody running over that school bus when it turned around. That's a dangerous situation and I couldn't see using it for all of this traffic in its present condition. Another last comment I've got would be rogue wits and what are you going to do about that? Well, you've got all this traffic coming in, construction traffic coming in and these citizens are trying to get out of there. That's going to be dearly impossible to do. And for that reason, unless that stuff is, is corrected before it comes before this board, I, my vote is going to be another.
Well, we would just.
Please.
We would just, all I can say is we would build all the roads to the codes that the county requires and, and the city of Woodfinn requires, town of Woodfinn requires. That's all I can, that's all I can offer. But, but we would build to what the town requires us to build to.
The public portion is closed? Wow. It kind of is. It's open for them. So here's the rock and hard heist because I personally would just like to vote on what we have. I'm, I'm concerned about, and help me if I'm wrong, withdrawing it. Is it setting it up for? I don't know what it's setting us up for. So.
Please, please.
Excuse me, please.
Yeah.
Or is removing the apartment going to eliminate our biggest concerns? Because our height restriction was a big concern, but traffic is still a thing. So I mean.
I think we have some, we have some conditions regardless, whether if, assuming, assuming the multifamily piece is out and that apartment complex is a separate, separate project altogether. Then we still have a requirement that it's safe from a fire perspective, safe from a traffic perspective and not just volume of traffic, but widths of roads and turning, turning vehicles around. And then we've got an easement issue. So I, I, I don't know whether those things can be conditional requirements, because some of those are pretty big reviews, right?
Yeah, well, the, the traffic as far as fire access, that will be reviewed by the fire marshal. That won't be, that's, that's.
But that should be a precursor as well, but it should be.
I agree. So a traffic study should have been a precursor. And I even asked last month for an actual traffic study and we kind of got.
So an updated, you know, it used to be a 2025, now it's 20.
And they didn't do that. And they didn't address the 60 foot clearance until we kind of brought it up.
Let me say this. In terms of the project, if we approve it with that multifamily section being pulled out of this application and that is going to be its own application in the future, depending on whether or not the developer wants to do that. That, that's out of the scope of what we would be approving if that is the route that they're wanting to take. So in terms of, we can, you know, sort of make this agreement around that three year sort of be, we don't want that five year window. We can kind of look at in terms of the traffic, at least for the proposal that would be on board. It is far less traffic. We have kind of at least, I don't know if we necessarily solved the issue of the fire safety portion because, you know, we don't know about that project in the future. But in terms of the existing project, if that is removed, it, it's a, you know, we're not having that 60 foot high, you know, variance that they are wanting. So, I mean, in terms of a whole bunch of stuff, we are solving a bunch of our issues. If, at least in terms of what the project is, would be voted on. I, I don't, I don't know whether or not that solves all of our issues and I still have, you know, a bunch of concerns. But I just think that that should be like laid out, that that is, we would not be looking at the multifamily aspect.
Ricky, how many single family homes would we have?
Well, let's see. So I'll, I'll remind everybody, there was 224 units that are baked into the background. Remember, let's go back to the beginning. We have 110 single family lots that are platted.
Yeah, but they all kind of go, this overrides everything.
And there's 114 townhome lots. This, this approval would allow them to reorganize that. And so we have 78 single family and then there's 21 other lots that are owned by others. So that puts us at 99. So it goes from 110 to 99, if I recall my math. And it's a.
Wait, excuse me.
There's 20.
I'm, on, on this project here, the way it's designed right now.
Yes.
If we just, how many units go away? Oh, you got to list it up top there.
How many, 169 units that would be reconfigured?
I'm sorry, how many?
169 would be the new number.
So, yeah.
So we're going from just under 400 down to 169?
That would, would be what we're approving tonight.
Yeah. And, and the 224 that you're saying, that's, that's also.
That includes this, this, this gentleman spoke tonight. There's, you know, there's this 20 townhome lots and 21 single family. So there's 40 some other properties that are kind of like not included that are also have got rights to develop that are needing the utilities. So that was kind of one person speaking. So we have those, but those are also out there. But he's doing a net reduction on the number of single family lots. So. Yeah. So compared to what we have today, right now, this, if you take out the multifamily, there would be a net reduction in number of units that's recorded on the plats today.
By how much?
50. Uh, how much is that? Like 13?
No, it's more than that.
15?
31.
I was.
Okay, okay. I think 16 lots, 16 lots less.
16? No, so I'm, I'm missing a picture here because if we eliminate the apartment complex, how many units of that goes away?
Well, that's 225. Yeah, 225 goes away. Yeah, sorry, 225 go away. Yes.
They go away.
Yeah, go away. Cause it's 394 on his plan and you've got to subtract 225 away from that.
Okay. So then the rest of it is going to stay as it is drawn right there.
Yes. So we would just carve this out. And if I understand, he's going to offer to withdraw the multifamily from tonight. And you hit me if I'm speaking for you, Dan, incorrect, Jason too. He would remove the 225. And so what was it y'all said? It was 169 is the total? To be proven 169, single family, townhome units. And in essence, all you're allowing at this point is allowing a little bit of rebalancing of some of those steep slope lots we talked about here. So a little bit of rebounds and giving up lots in certain areas like was coded out here and then allowing some, swapping out some grading. So in essence, that's really the only thing happening. This down here is pretty much just reorganizing the lots.
And by removing the apartments, does that affect his calculations for steep slope by any?
No, because they're all, you can see they're not in that blue highlight area.
So I guess that's a question for the board.
So what happens in the future?
Well.
With that piece of.
I know, that's.
Anything, anything that requires 20, as 20 lots or units has to come back before this board for a conditional zoning. So.
So do we feel as the board that by removing that whole? Let me just ask this question. Are you willing to, before I get any more discussions, are you willing to do what Ricky said? Because otherwise I'm not wasting my time having this discussion right now. So. You're willing tonight to agree that that whole center portion is null and void and gone and removed from this entire project?
This application.
This application.
This application. I'm not saying I won't come back with a different plan or the same plan, but for tonight, it's removed.
For this application.
For this application.
It'll have to be an entirely.
It'll have to be a complete other.
I'm sorry?
I'm not in favor of doing that. I'm in favor of we.
Vote on what we have existing.
What we got existing, let everybody get everything straightened out.
And if we have enough, there's a, there's enough of us that if you feel that way, I don't want to twist anybody's arm and push anybody. So we're going to move ahead with the application as is written tonight. We're going to vote on that, Ricky. Okay. All right. So we're going to close or any other questions at all? So we are going to officially close.
I have a, a question for you then.
But I mean, to, I mean, to Ricky or.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So we're going to close, open to the public is now closed. And now it's just our discussions.
So what was your concern with, with with discussing approving it without that and with other conditional? You know? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
My concern is that they're going to come back and ask for the same thing they're asking for right now.
He kind of said that might be a possibility.
I mean, so why not just say no to it now? And let everybody get everything straightened out. We need a study for the roads. I don't agree, I don't agree with putting all that traffic out there and potentially harming people.
Yeah, I agree.
Even if you take the, the issue away with the, the five stories, you still got a safety issue with the roads.
You still got tractor trailers hauling construction equipment up that road.
And I'm, I'm on the water board here.
And the water board, we, you know, we, we deal directly with the fire departments and the fire departments are going to have in Woodfinn, they're going to have a water truck going with each fire truck because they don't know for sure whether or not the fire hydrants are going to be programmed. And we work diligently to try to get 40 some fire hydrants straightened out. But that may not happen and we don't know where there might be existing fire hydrants up there that's not working. So those trucks will continue to go up there along with a fire truck. So look at two trucks trying to turn around up there instead of one. I just, it's a big issue.
No, I think that's a valid concern, though I will say that I believe this project is on the city of Asheville's water. Just in terms of getting.
They did say that, yes.
Yeah, making sure all of our.
I'm just talking about fire trucks in general.
Okay, yeah. I just want to make sure we have all our ducks in a row.
But you know, as well as I do, they're on Asheville water, but Woodfinn Fire Department.
It's in the Woodfinn district, so.
And we had the problem when we had the fire MSD, all we did all day was truck water all day long from the mill from the fire hydrants down by where I work. So.
So I'm in favor of candidate saying no and that everybody get their issue straightened out and then come back.
Better prepared with a brand new plan. Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion of any sort or I'll make a motion? I don't care. Does anybody have a motion?
I make a motion. We vote on exactly what we got. To see if it's approved.
Okay. I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay, we are going to poll the board. Okay. Mr. Hanson.
Point of clarification. I don't think we have to have a motion suggesting that we vote on this as it is. No, we don't need that. We just need to have a motion to approve or not approve.
Yeah, or tip.
So do you want to make a motion that we deny this application?
I make a motion we deny the application.
Okay, we have a second. Ricky, we have a motion to not, to deny this application. Is that word specifically enough for you?
Yes, I.
Based upon.
Yeah, you can.
The height restrictions, safety concerns, road traffic studies, but the legal stipulation right now is a 35 foot. They're not willing to come down 35 foot. So.
Okay. So if y'all make a motion and you approve that, uh, just for clarity for everybody here, is that this will go to town council for, with a recommended for denial. So, so it doesn't, doesn't kill the application here tonight. So this is the last stop. It still goes to town council.
Do we need to specify our?
It would, it would be helpful to have to specify the reasons where that.
So reason number one is a 35 foot height, height restriction.
Okay.
Reason number two, I would say would be a traffic, lack of traffic study and concern about traffic infrastructure not handling the proposed traffic.
And third would be fire safety and, and approval by the fire marshal review of, you know, correct, or sizing of the infrastructure to fit trucks off there with, with the water necessary based on the number of units. So both the traffic and the fire, uh, the concern is that the high density of units.
Yeah. Would, would we also want to add the easement to the other?
Oh yeah, we don't have an easement at this time either. So. For the, yeah, well, yeah.
Finalized.
All right.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So we are going to vote on a uh, motion to deny it. So a yes vote denies it. Clear? Correct?
Clear, yes.
Okay, Mr. Hanson.
Yes.
Mr. Valentine.
Yes.
Mr. Deroney.
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins.
Yes.
Mr. Vehon.
Yeah.
Mr. Young.
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes.
Okay. So like I said, it, I'll check with the town manager when she gets back in town. I think we're scheduled for the July meeting, but we'll be re-noticing and reposting that. So Marie and I will work on getting letters back out because it will be a new public hearing. So it kind of concludes the planning board. And it is possible that the applicant can still withdraw a portion of that in process. So just because this was denied, this motion doesn't mean that we can't do that and be offered at town council. So. I will be making, yeah, we'll be posting everything. So this will be another public hearing in this room for town council. It'll just, when we get a chance to set those dates, we'll notice that, but it'll be at least 10 but 25 day notice prior to.
Thank you.
All right.
I would like to take a 10 minute recess.
Okay.
So we can clear out, enter, after the breaks.
Remember the mics are hot. So.
Which says it's supposed to be a temporary construction, but it looks like it's there permanently.
We're up. So is this one bringing you from last time or is this one from last time? Because I wasn't very.
This one, we talked this one last time.
I know the last one. This one we did also.
So would you like me to get started, kicked off for this one? This should be straightforward. So you seen this one last month for the preliminary, the concept plan for the 13 lots on Riverside Drive. So we have it back for the preliminary plat. They made the updates to the landscaping and adjusting the open space area to be an individual lot. So they went back through and adjusted all our comments that we had in the concept plan. Would that staff found that it met the minimum standards for technical review for the subdivision plat? It's though Mountain Village. The three parcels are, again, no minimum lot width, no minimum lot size, your setbacks are zero, and they meet that. The aerial in that area, see, it's kind of surrounded by a lot of single family manufactured housing. Everything's detached. And then just for reference, even though it doesn't really play into your decision, it's residential one for development. So the single family subdivision matches with our future land use for this area. And again, it's allowed by right. This is a ministerial review. There's no zoning changes and it's back before you for the preliminary plat.
So we're just here to basically just review it and approve it?
Yeah, there's no public hearing because, yeah, there's no, I had no comments because they addressed it. Remember, it was the open space out of the individual lots and then getting that landscaping areas some easements. So they've addressed those things.
There was one question about a drive for lots one and two.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe they got that and took care of. Yeah. So we'll be, they'll, he had it worked out with DOT, so he adjusted it.
Like to make a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay, in that case.
I've got your suggested motion up there if you need that.
I move to approve the preliminary subdivision plat for 2.8 acres as shown and complies with the technical requirements of chapter 46 dash subdivisions. I'll second.
Hey, Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Deroni?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Vehon?
Yeah.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes.
Thank you. So the next one's a general zoning request. I don't get a lot of those. So this is a little bit confusing, but you'll see it in the plat. This area is a 1.25 acre portion of a larger tract of land that's currently zoned community shopping. The request is to rezone this 1.25 acres from CS to R21 as part of a recombination plat, and I'll show you in a moment. And at the very bottom, there's a small little triangle that will move from the existing lot 42 to the bigger parcel. And they want to take that 0.18 acre portion from R21 to CS. And I'll show you the zoning map in a minute. So all this large tract is, excuse me, large tract here is community shopping. It's at the very end of Ventana Drive, Retreat Ridge. It's been this way since it was annexed. The city annexed about 350 some acres back in August of 2004. When they established that initial zoning for the larger area, they established a big portion of, it's R43, which is more like the Versant half of the development. The R21 is more of the Ventana side. And then they established at that person's request, this community shopping that goes further north.
Ricky, can you just give me an idea of where this is in town?
Okay, so you know where Baird Coast Road's at? And you go to the very end and you go to the gate. It's Versant-Vetana subdivision. I can pull up a larger map.
Where is this in relation to the gate?
This is as far from the gate as you can get.
Toward, toward Reverbville Road.
No, this is actually toward, back toward, above Beaver Dam, excuse me, above Asheville Golf Course. So there's a Robin Hood tract that's in a conservation easement. I can back up to another zoning map here. Yeah, so this is east. Reynolds Mountain is actually kind of directly to your south southwest.
So what, so purpose does this serve?
There, the person that's wanting to buy this lot is wishing to acquire this additional area to build a home. So you can't consider that as far as what proposed use will be, but it's to purchase, to make Lot 42 bigger, so to construct a home in this area.
Oh, so it's going from.
CS.
Shopping to residential.
Residential.
And it'll be combined into one lot then?
By one lot, yeah. And there'll be a tiny piece that she will be gaining from this future lot buyer down here that will go CS. It's a net reduction in community shopping of like 1.07 acres. Yeah. And so you can see that's community, that's Asheville down there. It's residential two, which is again, hilly, larger lots, narrow right of ways. So that kind of lines up with the future map that this actually moved to a residential zoning district. So that fits. And then just for aerial, you can see there's mostly single family homes on this, this ridge line. I don't know if everybody's had, it's a gated community, but it's fairly nice back in there. I've driven a couple of times. It's nice lots, nice views. And Teresa would probably give you a tour if you ever needed.
And so it's not, it's just going to be a single family home?
Yeah, this is going to be a single family. That's what they've kind of told a spoiler alert. But when you're making a zoning, a general zoning decision, you can't, you have to conceive what potential uses are allowed. That said, too, steep slope, it is steep slope. So that would apply. And by the recombinations, they're making a non-conforming lot that's like 1.38 larger. So they're making it a conforming lot.
Okay.
And steep slope's going to limit the number of, you know, R21 is going to be single family use only. It's going to be limited on the grading and the impervious surface. So there's not a, as staff would say, a lot of potential negatives of moving to R21. Yeah. Yeah. Because you see Asheville down here. And so this is all Woodford up here.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this.
Wait, wait, I have to open the public.
Oh, no. Yeah.
Do you have to?
We have the applicant here.
Do you want to ask Ricky any questions before I go to public?
And we have Ms. Carroll here.
That's right. We do have one. Okay, this time we will open it to the public. And you're from the project?
She's the property owner. Ms. Carroll is.
Okay. Would you like to come up and speak about anything? Hang on a second, because if you're speaking, I have to get you up to the microphone. Sorry. Ms. Marie won't like you speaking from back there. Thank you. If you could just state your name and address for the record, please.
Teresa Carroll. And I guess our Naples address, 5934 Premier Way, 2113 Naples, Florida.
Okay.
And basically, this is a steep slope lot, has a beautiful, beautiful view. And we're just enlarging the lot so Mark can build, you know, the beautiful home that he wants on the lot. It's just really a, you know, he asked for this and it's something that we said, okay, we'll do that, you know? So he just asked for a bigger lot. He wants the views and different directions. And so it's really very cut and dry. It's, it's just making the lot bigger. And it does have, you know, that portion is zoned commercial. So taking that back down to residential so it can be platted. Yeah.
Questions, Greg?
Just a permanent home or second home?
Permanent home.
The one. Sit.
Sit.
I have another person who wants to speak.
Yeah, no. Well, wait a minute. Hold on one second. We're still speaking with the applicant yet.
Just move closer.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And all I'll say is that it doesn't matter if it's primary or second, it just, as long as it's not short term, it'll be the only thing we wouldn't allow.
We have quite a few second homeowners, I think, up in there. I've met a few of them. So but I'll let. Yeah, I'm going to throw the list out. So if, we'll take you up. If you just state your name and your address and we'll just open to the public.
Gary Lind, 365 Retreat Ridge Way. So ours is the last house up, up the hill. That lot will be below us. And we've had a number of neighbors here this evening. And the first meeting went on a bit long, so they all went home. So I have all the votes and it's okay.
Good. Thank you. We're going to clap for that one.
Very dramatic.
Anyone else in the public want to speak on behalf of this motion? Okay. I guess in that case, if we don't have any more questions for Ricky, we'll close. Do we have any more questions, Ricky? Okay, then we'll close the public portion. And motion man? I got a good name. You like that?
I move to approve the rezoning of 1.25 acres from the community shopping district to R21 residential district and a rezoning of 0.18 acres from R21 residential district to community shopping as shown on exhibits A and B. I'm going to lose that title in a minute. And find that it is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan, and meets the development needs of the community in that the request. One, used as the future land use map for guide development decisions, 1.1.1. And two, make government decision making accessible and transparent to all residents.
Very good. Do we have a second?
I'll second that. I'll second.
All right. In that case, Mr. Hanson?
Aye.
Yes. Mr. Valentine?
Aye.
Mr. Deroni?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Excuse me, Mr. Vehon?
Yeah.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Yes. It is approved unanimously.
Okay. Thank you.
And you can go back and say that you had the power.
So last item tonight is the tax amendment.
So last item tonight is the text amendment. As a little bit of background, this was uh an amendment that was kind of prompted by town council.
Pardon me, we're still having more meetings.
Thank you.
So um town council formed a subcommittee to investigate landscaping requirements in the town uh back last summer. And of course, we got that process started. Helene happened. Everybody, the world stopped. And uh we picked back up in the winter of this year. And so we, that subcommittee, made of three council members, kind of worked with Shannon and myself about developing the uh language that you have before you tonight. So it wasn't something that staff kind of just dreamed up. Uh, it was more of a prompting by town council, the body uh more concerned about before we even get through this code update. Cuz it could be another sixteen, eighteen months before we actually have a new code. And so to stop the bleeding per se, we wanted to kind of get something out there. So it's chapter forty-six fifty-four will be amended as part of that. So real quickly, current standards, Mountain Village is really the only district that requires some comprehensive landscaping standards. It does require open space, we talked about this earlier tonight, and street trees for new development. And then uh that's in the subdivision. And then Mountain Village also is only one in general zoning classification, just commercial development that requires a little bit of vehicular use area landscaping, street yards and buffer yards. Remember the subdivision we just seen, they're required to put a little bit of planning abut in other district. And when you get to that, outside of that, so just Mountain Village, the only one that requires anything. Community shopping, which is where Ingles is at, CVS is at, Saltface Mule, uh Reynolds Village, Miss Woodville Road. The only thing that's required as far as landscaping is a ten foot buffer strip when it butts up to residential property. That's it, so just a buffer strip, ten foot. And um and really with subdivisions, again, we don't have any open space. The only reason why you've seen open space on that preliminary plat tonight was it was Mountain Village. If it had been zoned RS seven, R seven, R twenty-one, there's no open space requirements. So you have no baseline. So what the proposal do is apply to any new multifamily or single family projects with five or more dwellings. New commercial construction that's five thousand square feet, expansions that are fifty percent greater of the pre-expansion square footage, or any expansion regardless of what's going on with the existing building of twenty thousand. So that's your triggers. So if somebody's just bumping out five hundred square feet for a cooler, more than likely, it's not gonna cause this cascade of development standards. We get in that new Starbucks up on Woodville Road, there's no landscaping requirements there. They're putting it in because they wanna put some stuff in, but there's no requirement. So what you see is just voluntary. And what you see at CVS, voluntary, otherwise it'd be a hundred percent paid. So I don't know if you've read the whole markups, but just to say that, you know, the, to kind of trim it down, pretty much you're looking at street trees and commercial areas of one large maturing tree over fifty feet. Or if there's power lines, it'd be a small maturing tree over forty feet. Uh, the buffer yard, buffer strip, buffer yard would go to twenty foot wide. And there's a plant rate of eight trees and fourteen shrubs, and that's a per one hundred linear feet. And this is all ways, again, it's like what Asheville might require, what Hendersonville might require, Fletcher. So we looked at multiple jurisdictions in the area. We didn't just look at Asheville. Sometimes they're, I hate to say it, I worked in Asheville, Marie and I both worked, there's a, they can kind of be almost overplanning and we didn't wanna go zero to sixty on everybody. We wanna try to find a good workable medium. Vehicular use area, parking lots, but not necessarily parking lots. It can be in like a trucking terminal, there's maneuvering areas and you got your drive aisles. So we don't say parking space, we say that V U A. So anywhere that a vehicle's intended to move and roll is your V U A. And so that would be uh one tree for fifteen hundred square foot of vehicle use areas. That other trigger, I'll say that, is ten parking spaces or five thousand square feet. So there's your trigger first. You gotta have a five thousand square foot parking lot or ten parking spots. So if it's a little bitty, let's say I, ice machine that has two parking spots and it might not trigger it. But in that case, it'd be one per fi- fifteen hundred. And then if islands are, excuse me, islands are required, you're gonna have to have a three hundred square foot island. If you dig into the ordinance as well, there's planning standards about how deep you need to dig the hole, how you need to amend the soil, how you need to protect that area. Um, screening, one thing we also don't have is screening, and that's more like dumpsters is a classic example. Uh, other types of HVAC equipment. So it's not typically like the building is some other service areas. And we're given the option of an evergreen hedge or a opaque fence or wall. So you'll see a dumpster, it's usually a block enclosure.
So if Ingles sells their building and uh some other.
Yeah.
Business buys it, um, does it trigger all of this? They have to amend or it can stay exactly?
It stays like it is because it's not, there's no expansion. So if the Ingles was to come in and say, hey, we wanna upgrade the building, we bought some acreage. We wanna add on to the building twenty-two thousand square feet, make it super Ingles. This comes into play.
Could we um suggest the amendment that for any um businesses that don't currently meet these standards, if the current business is sold, the new business would need to upgrade?
Transfer property.
Yeah, there's no real trigger to do it by transfer property cuz it's not, it's all land use driven. And I'll say this too, there, right now, we're still dealing with Senate Bill three eighty-two where there's a limit on when you adopt new standards for existing non-conforming situations. So we're hopeful that the General Assembly will roll back that. There's some, a couple of good bills that've got some traction to allow us to apply new standards to existing development. I don't think there's really a nexus with property ownership. And I don't think that, I don't think you can do that. I've not run across it. It's been when there's like new development, redevelopment, expansions, digging out a parking lot or something. There might be some triggers, but you have to have like a clear nexus, just changing property ownership. I don't think you're gonna be able to do that.
So it's our new flood rule, same thing.
Flood rule, yeah, change of ownership, it's existing, yeah, all rules. If you change ownership, and it could be that all you done was file an LLC and you moved it from your personal to your LLC.
That won't trigger anything.
That wouldn't trigger anything.
If it's any substantial improvements, things like that, okay.
Yeah, and we don't have really a cost of work thing. Our experience was in Asheville too, if there's cost of work, it's same thing like with flood. People will work to just do incremental, they'll do the twenty-five percent improvement and stop. And then they'll wait the timeout and do that. So it kind of, in some cases, it discourages, especially smaller, older properties that are like lower value, people just neglect. And then lastly, open space, right now, we don't have an open space requirement, except again, Mountain Village. And it's only when you develop a Mountain Village, whether it's subdivision or commercial. We're gonna make it an open space standard for everything. That's whether it's a major subdivision or if you're an apartment complex or if you're doing commercial development. And it ranges from five to fifteen percent with your smallest lots, parcels being the five percent. And then there's a middle bracket of ten and a larger bracket of fifteen percent. Subdivisions will be fifteen percent. I think if you look at the number of dwelling units in Mountain Village, what it's like five hundred square feet, it works out to be more like seven, seven and a half percent open space when it's five hundred square feet per unit. So we'll actually get more uh in that case. I think the last one we seen was Reese's High Hopes, you remember that one? That one, I think, it worked out, what, about eighteen? That was like seven, sixteen, seventeen percent if I recall, wasn't it, Marie? She's like, she's not listening to me. I think it was about sixteen, seventeen percent. Yeah, anyway, I'm like, catch her off guard. I'm, I'm thinking through here. I think it was about sixteen percent. He could have actually done less, but he actually done a lot more, but that was voluntary as part of that subdivision. This would have made that open space mandatory. And then lastly, other changes, we changed the tree credit table where it was all this, it's more like the maximum credit was three. Uh, we moved it to like maximum of five trees, but we went larger trees, like twenty-five inches and larger gets five credits. So we wanted to kind of lean this a little bit higher, where we put a little bit more higher value on the larger existing trees. When we get new stuff, we wanna make sure people are not hacking it. So prohibit excessive pruning. We kind of do that a little bit in steep slope. One of the other big things would be prohibiting speculative grading to all zoning districts in town. Right now, we don't allow grading in steep slope uh unless you have a plan, first evaluate.
So that's gonna.
Be town, townwide, so you're, you're looking at that. We moved some definitions, we, we kind of, Marie pointed this out, like steep slope, we had, didn't move the definitions out, steep slope into the rest of fifty-four, ten. So we're gonna get them out so we don't have definitions sprinkled elsewhere. Tree credit table, uh, we're taking out, this is, we have a site plan checklist on fifty-four, one fifty-seven for conditional zoning. We're taking that out. And Marie has checklist and we'll hand them out for CZs, house plans, deep slope, whatever you're doing. People get confused when they see that site plan checklist and they think they have to do that for their deck. We're like, we don't need that for your deck. Uh, we, we just, we need something real simple. But it confuses people from outside the areas trying to submit. And lastly, as part of that, we're adding Appendix A, so we're, we've worked to get in a, a planning list. This is just the first page of each one. Uh, took some stuff from Asheville, but we really found this Western Ant North Carolina native plant list. It's heavy on native stuff. There are some other things that are commonly in nurseries. But this would be for people, the required landscaping. So if you're required those three street trees, they need to be of this. If you plant four more trees, whatever, as long as you're not doing invasive, that's fine, but.
Bradford pears?
Bradford pears, Tree of Heaven, so please don't do those.
Kudzu.
Kudzu. So we have that and we, we went through and the, the initial list that we had had a real good link back to mostly University of Missouri. So we kind of continued that listing so people could read through that. And I actually had, went through each one of them to check to see, was it appropriate for the southeast? Is it invasive for the southeast? So, and we done it for shrubs as well. And again, trying to show people that there's pollinators benefit, certain butterflies, if it's edible fruit. It's just extra information, you know.
That's kind of good because if a person wants to plant a tree, at least they can see what is good about it.
Yeah, I've actually run across a couple of trees. I'm like, hey, I'd like to have these in my front yard.
I'm sitting here going, hmm.
Yeah, and they're native and some things. So uh, again, like I said, the, the, the subcommittee met five times and went through the planning list one time, we went through the standards three different times. So I'll say that um it was heavily curated by that subcommittee from council. I think that was Eric Edgerton was one member, uh, Johanna Young, and then Hazel Thornton was the other. So there's three of them. So we met for like two hours about every time. So there's probably ten or, ten or twelve hours of subcommittee time they met just doing this. So there was some, I'll say, pretty heavy lifting on their part.
Awesome.
So that should, to say all that, it's to help y'all know like it's, there's been some vetting besides just Marie and I or Shannon just working to, that there's been some other people looking at this.
On this list, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I just went to a, a screen that had it. I wondered if there were shorter.
Yeah, this, this is shrub. So we put the height in there to help uh people. And if it's light, water thirsty or shady.
You're not gonna make us memorize botanical names, are you?
I can't hardly remember the names, the common name. So I don't know if there's anybody here to speak tonight for it. Marie might have some questions. No, she don't.
Anyone online?
We don't have that, we don't have that set up, thank. I used to have to do that. All right, uh, I guess you can open a public hearing and if you need to, enclose it.
Okay, public hearing open, public hearing closed.
Okay, so we have anybody here to speak. And we're recommending approval to the text amendments for chapter forty-six and fifty-four.
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, let me do one then, she knows that I was actually here this.
There you go.
I'd like to recommend, make a motion that we approve the proposed text amendments to chapters forty-six and fifty-four.
Wait, we're not done yet. Yeah. You gotta read the other, you gotta read, you got it here now.
You got it going.
Find this reasonable.
I move to approve the proposed text amendment subject to the following additional conditions.
No, I haven't.
Are no conditions. And find that it is reasonable, is in the public interest, is consistent with Woodfin Together Comprehensive Plan and meets the development needs of the community in that the request, one, provides additional clarity and predictability to development requirements, thereby supporting economic development. Two, ensures the town's planning, zoning and permitting processes facilitate sustained and positive development and support the needs of business and industry. And three, preserves and enhances Woodfin's open space, natural environment and community character. Second.
Mr. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Valentine?
Yes.
Mr. Deroni?
Yes.
Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Mr. Bee Hong? Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Approved.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
Did we cover, did we cover everything?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I put, I put the slide adjournment up here.